meeting for the summer because we are off for August. So, thank you everyone who is here in person at your summertime and thank everyone including city staff for preparing for this as well. At this time, Madam Clerk, will you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated December 16th, 2024, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you so much. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Present.
Ms. Hamlet?
Here.
Ms. Calmenson?
Here.
Mr. Pulowski?
Here.
Mr. Smallwood?
Here.
Ms. Toth?
Here.
President McTiernan?
Present. All right, at the Pledge of Allegiance, I'm going to leave the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. At this time, Madam Clerk, will you please read the explanatory note regarding closed sessions and hearings and comments?
A closed session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channels 34 and 36 and Verizon Channel 30 and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give her email a copy to thecityclerk@cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. Unless you're using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. At this time, do I have a motion to approve the minutes for regular enclosed session of July 1st, 2025?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Reports tonight. Madam Mayor, do you have a report for us this evening?
Of course I do. Good evening, everybody. We have had a couple of swearing-in ceremonies over the last month, both for our police department and for our fire department. At the firehouse on July 18th, I had the pleasure of swearing in our two newest career firefighters, Timothy Digney and Michael Tomich, both of whom have been serving in our volunteer division since August of 2024. And last week at City Hall on July 21st, we had a swearing-in ceremony for our newest police officer, Ivan Garcia, who comes to us from the Patterson Police Department. Congratulations to all and welcome to Summit. I want to offer my congratulations to last week's graduates of the first session of our Police Youth Academy and best of luck to this week's cadets. They've already made it two days. This program is tough. It is also very rewarding, and I'm really grateful to our police department for putting such a fantastic program together, particularly Officer Kottiga. He does an excellent job with the kids. And last, National Night Out. Join us on the Village Green one week from today at National Night Out. It's one of the most popular events of the summer. This community building event takes place annually on the first Tuesday of August, featuring displays and demonstrations from various federal, state, county, and municipal law enforcement agencies, including air police and fire departments, Volunteer First Aid Squad and Division of Public Works. There will be food trucks, live music and entertainment, and, my favorite, a dunk tank featuring Summit Police and firefighters. This is one of my favorite events of the year, and I hope to see you there. More information is available on our website, cityofsummit.org. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our city administrator, Ms. Baldwin, do you have a report for us?
Yes, thank you Council President. Good evening, everyone. The Summit Free Market August dates are Saturday, August 9th from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. and Friday, August 22nd from 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. Summit residents with a parking or disposal permit can attend and browse donated items, take what they want for free, and drop off items as well. Donation guidelines are available at cityofsummit.org/free market. An update on New Jersey American Water and PSENG projects. I'm sure everybody's seeing them all over town. New Jersey American Water continues their critical water main replacement projects in the neighborhoods off of Morris Avenue near Washington School. They expect to complete the main installations later this week, and then they'll proceed with service replacement and main tie-ins over the following six weeks. Final paving on the affected roads will be scheduled for late fall or early spring, depending on the weather, and PSENG continues their work in the city, replacing and upgrading their mains, following up with service connections and final paving. They intend to finish up their work in those neighborhoods and will coincide with New Jersey American Water's work for final paving this fall. All other ongoing work in the city will be completed by December with final paving in early spring 2026, and to see a full list of locations, refer to our city website. Half-price membership at the Summit Family Aquatic Center. So, beginning on August 1st, this Friday, all memberships to the Summit Family Aquatic Center are at half price. So, if you didn't sign up earlier in the season, but you want to beat the heat and all the heat waves that we're having, this is a great opportunity to enjoy the facility for the rest of the summer. To register or find out more information, go to summitcommunityprograms.com. And in late-breaking news, a sinkhole developed at a broken manhole on Broad Street. So, our crews are actively working towards repair, but the eastbound lanes between Summit and Walnut will be closed until the repair can be made. Overnight, the westbound lane will also be closed, and we will keep you updated as the situation develops. And that concludes my report. Council President.
Thank you so much. All right, I just was going to give, I had the pleasure of doing a Facebook Q&amp;A with our mayor a couple of weeks ago, and we had some pretty good questions. One question, a couple of questions, in case people haven't seen it, I thought was worthy to just talk about, was where are we? was worthy to just talk about, was where are we on the Broad Street West land disposal? So, just to give people an update on that, we are in the process of finishing up an agreement with the owner of this Finger Lot that is, that bisects city property. The city does not own all the contiguous land. There's a lot in between. That is moving ahead. We're hoping to close on that with the land swap with that owner within the next 45 to 60 days. Once that's done, there probably will be some tweaks to the zoning as part of our Affordable Housing Round Four commitment. We have, we're going to harden the zoning in that area to make what is currently the overlay zoning, the zoning. And so, the planning board will be looking at that. But this is moving ahead for hopefully some sort of auction of the property, hopefully early fourth quarter of this year, if all things go well. That's one thing. On our Round Four, just, we are now a month into the challenge period for our Round Four plan, and touch wood, so far, we haven't heard of any. That doesn't mean there won't be any. They have another month till the end of August. But when we hear something on that, we will let you know. We're very proud of our Round Four plan. We think it's good, and we're certainly willing to defend it. And that is my report. Okay. All right. Let's move along. At this moment, Councilman Pulowski, do we have a historical minute today?
We do. So, on a hot summer day like this, I thought I'd dust off the history of the municipal pool. After many years of debate, and this was originally done June 20th, 2017, after many years of debate, in 1968, the Common Council approved the hiring of consultants to develop plans for what was then to be called the Municipal Pool. This was by no means a project that had unanimous support from the community. As the 2017 Council heard when the currently anonymous author of this piece spoke about the history of the Municipal Golf Course in a similar fashion, many members of the community were adamantly opposed to adding a pool, in this case, either because of where it might be located or for fear of adding to their financial burden through higher taxes. While the then-mayor and council were in favor of it, approval of the pool only happened after many public hearings that ultimately culminated in a referendum. The Summit Taxpayers Association formed a year earlier in 1967 fought hard for the referendum as they feared the pool fees would not cover the cost of construction and usage. The referendum was close. 2,328 voted for the pool. 2,171 voted against it. That's 51.7% in favor and 48.3 against. While not much of a mandate, Common Council thankfully authorized the project, and construction on the pool commenced in 1971, costing $505,000. Did they have to use, what is it, you know, the contract, the approved contracting?
I think that was before that.
The Municipal Pool, now called the Summit Family Aquatic Center, opened in 1972 and has been a centerpiece of our community ever since. And despite fears from the Summit Taxpayer Association, to this day, happily, it has been a self-funding enterprise thanks to the dedication and hard work of our Department of Community Program leadership. And so, the author of this and original presenter was then-and-current Council President Mike McTiernan.
A blast from the past. Thank you. Okay. We're on to the presentation portion of our meeting, and we do have a few today. So, the first presentation is going to be about our Summit Police Department and reaccreditation. So, please.
So, good evening, Council President, Mayor, Council. I'm here tonight to recognize your police department for having achieved reaccreditation. Now, this process is a very rigorous one, and so, to prove it, the numbers speak for themselves. So, about 54% of all the agencies that would be eligible to apply for accreditation in the state of New Jersey have made it through. 54%. And that includes prosecutor's office, sheriff's office, and every college and university, those that have a legitimate law enforcement unit. So, my point here is, so, they have actually now, by having achieved reaccreditation, joined a very exclusive group of less than 32% of all the law enforcement agencies in the state of New Jersey, so we squad an achievement. If you indulge for two minutes, I'd like to share with you the significance of the achievement. So, the Summit Police Department has once again made a commitment to adhering to best practices at the state and national level in a highly regarded statewide law enforcement accreditation program. This program administered to the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police and the New Jersey Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission itself to transparently demonstrate the professionalism, transparency, and preparedness of state's law enforcement agencies in the state's public safety system. During these uniquely challenging times and the threat to our health and safety, encouraging law enforcement agencies to follow standardized practices and policies is a potentially life-saving and cost-effective investment of time and resources. Accreditation, I say again, represents a professional and significant professional achievement. Now, this prestigious reaccredited status demonstrates Chief Ryan Peters' firm commitment to state and national standards and the continued expectations for quality, professional, and ethical policing. Again, members of an elite group of 32%, less than 32% of all the agencies in the state of New Jersey. Now, accreditation provides objective evidence of an agency's commitment to excellence in leadership, resource management, and service delivery. Government officials can be more confident in the agency's ability to operate efficiently, meet committee needs, and offices in accredited agencies, as I say many here tonight, I understand what is going to be recognized as a true here tonight, they can take pride that they have been objectively recognized for their professionalism and adhering to the highest standards. Now, under Chief Ryan Peters' leadership, the Summit Police Department continues to assertively move forward with a history and commitment to following best practices with a preparedness plan and a verification of excellence as an accredited agency. So, it is the opinion of the assessment team. Certainly, I concur that the Summit Police Department is a highly professional and committed agency that exemplifies all of the tenets of law enforcement accreditation at the state and national level. Therefore, it is indeed my honor here tonight on behalf of the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police and the New Jersey Law Enforcement Commission to congratulate Chief Ryan Peters, Accreditation Manager Christopher Medina, the Assistant Accreditation Manager, Officer Adam Ioannis, Ms., I'm sorry, Assistant, the Administrative Manager, Nikki, I apologize. Ms. Nikki Griffith, I know I was going to mess it up, so I apologized beforehand. And for, I'd also like to congratulate the Summit Police Department, those officers that are here tonight, the Council President, the Mayor, the council at large, and all those citizens that they so proudly serve for having achieved the reaccreditation, joining a very, very exclusive group of law enforcement agencies that have made this a commitment to excellence in policing. So, to all, indeed, congratulations.
Thank you.
Chris, Nikki, Adam?
Just one second.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Mr. Delgado.
My pleasure.
All right. We have another presentation. This presentation is from our Chief of Police, Ryan Peters, and this is the Life Saving Award to Detective Darren Sliker.
Thank you, sir. I just want to thank Harry for coming out. I also like to thank Captain Medina, Officer Ioannis, and Nikki Griffiths for putting a lot of work in addition to their daily activities into the reaccreditation process. It is a grueling process and takes a lot of time out of their day. So, here today, I have a synopsis of what took place on June 28th, 2025. While off duty and spending time with friends in Lake Apakon, Detective Darren Sliker found himself in a critical situation that demanded immediate and decisive action. Following a day of recreational boating on the lake, Detective Sliker and a group of friends returned to the house of a close family friend. During that time, a male and female from the gathering proceeded to the front of the residence to retrieve a vehicle that was parked down the street. Moments later, a loud crash and screams could be heard coming from the front of the house. It was at that time Detective Sliker and another off-duty police officer, Joseph Kalella, from the Montville Police Department, responded to investigate. Once out front, Detective Sliker and Officer Kalella discovered both parties lying on the ground in the neighbor's driveway, seriously injured as they had been struck by a vehicle that had fled the scene. Without hesitation, Detective Sliker and Officer Kalella rushed to their aid. Assessing the scene, Detective Sliker quickly identified the male victim as unresponsive, suffering from multiple broken bones, severe head trauma, and showing signs of agonal breathing, which typically occurs during cardiac arrest. Demonstrating calm under extreme pressure, Detective Sliker initiated CPR and administered several critical rounds, refusing to give up until the victim's pulse was restored. Thanks to Detective Sliker's swift response and exceptional training, both victims survived and are expected to make a full recovery. Detective Sliker's actions that night were nothing short of heroic. He acted not because it was his duty, but because it was the right thing to do. His commitment to preserving life even while off duty serves as a powerful reminder that the oath we take as law enforcement officers is not just confined to a shift, a uniform, or a badge. It is a constant calling. For his valor, composure, and lifesaving intervention... Detective Sliker? Should have called you up before this. I proudly present Detective Darren Sliker with the Life Saving Award as well as an Exceptional Duty Award. Please join me in congratulating Detective Sliker on this well-deserved honor.
Thank you.
presentation this evening. This is a presentation on the Bringing Veterans Home program. Amelia Moriety was here from Bridges Outreach to present.
Hey, Mike. Delia asked me to say a couple more words in her stead.
Oh, okay. Please.
Amelia's a Summit High School alum who is currently attending Santa Clara University, and I think Delia has helped connect her with Bridges, who she's now doing an internship with on bringing veterans home. And so, now she's going to discuss it with us.
Yes. Hello, Council President, Council President, Mayor. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Amelia, and this summer, I have had the privilege to work as an intern for Bridges, specifically the new Bringing Veterans Home initiative that I will talk about a little bit later. A little bit about me, I do go to Santa Clara. I'm a double-major in political science and communications with an international relations emphasis. It's kind of a mouthful. But going to school in Santa Clara, which is located in San Jose, is really what prompted my interest in studying homelessness. San Jose is actually one of the cities in America currently facing the highest rates of homelessness, while simultaneously the highest rises in rental prices. So, I took a lot of courses on homelessness in San Jose, and that's kind of what prompted my interest in Bridges here in Summit, where I'm from. There we go. Okay. So, in my studies as a college student, I have realized that at a federal and even a state level, it is often very difficult to administer solutions to homelessness because the politics of homelessness come up, specifically the interconnectivity of economic issues. What's really awesome about organizations like Bridges and Bringing Veterans Home is that they're working rapidly, locally, and directly to simply provide housing and whatever other aid may be needed to people experiencing homelessness. They are also working with other organizations who are assigned to other different communities. Bridges focuses on Essex and Union County, but they work with other different organizations like Bridges that are assigned to other communities. I think the other thing that is really special about Bridges is that they operate based on principles of inclusion and empathy. I think that there are a lot of stereotypes that are often derived, that are associated with homelessness. I have friends at school who will complain about having to see homeless people on the streets, and regardless of what your beliefs on that may be, I think we can all agree that we're lucky to get to just see it and not have to experience it ourselves because really, these are just people just like us who are having a hard time, and homelessness can really happen to anyone. Okay. Okay. So, now I'm going to talk about the Project Connect Service Fair this year, which is held annually in Newark by Bridges. Is that working? Is it on? I think so. There we go. Okay. So, the, thank you. The service fair is designed to provide free services to anyone in the area experiencing homelessness. It is hosted by Bridges and funded by the Prudential Center. And up there, you can, if you have really good eyesight, you can see, you can see the different total stats that we received after the fair. I attended. It was awesome. There were so many different organizations involved. I have a list of them on the next slide, as well as a DJ, wellness treatments like haircutting, nails, that kind of stuff. And then, you can see, we were able to provide lots of, we were able to receive lots of referrals for people experiencing homelessness in the area, as well as provide lunches and other services that they needed. These are just a list of all of the type, all of the organizations that were involved, and I tried to organize them, sorry, I can step a little closer. I tried to organize them by the types of work that they do. For example, there's government and public agencies, housing and homelessness services, legal advocacy and justice support. So, it's really addressing all of the nuanced needs that are often associated with homelessness. So, and really, the service fair is just another example of that direct, rapid work that is so great and creates such an impact and really helps the people in our community. Now, I'm going to talk about Bringing Veterans Home. So, Bringing Veterans Home is a new initiative that Bridges started that is dedicated towards alleviating veterans homelessness in the Union and Essex County area. So, I have our mission statement there, enhancing existing systems, creating rapid access to housing, and ensuring homelessness becomes rare, brief, and non-reoccurring for our veterans. So, we receive clients through many different ways, street outreach from other organizations, but one of the biggest ways is through referrals. That's on the left-hand side, the little blue square. When you go to the Bringing Veterans Home website, it's that easy. It's right on the homepage. It's the first thing you see. You can submit a referral for a veteran, and yeah, we get them to us, and then we take action from there. And then, on the right, you'll see that, I think that number is 812. That is the total number of veterans referrals that New Jersey has received. However, as you'll see in this slide, the regionalization component is really important. We are, Union and Essex County is part of Region Two, and that's where Bridges operates. There's, you'll, you can kind of see the specific number of referrals for each county, but it's really important because it ensures that there's not duplicate work being done because other organizations are assigned to different regions. So, it ensures everyone, there's the biggest number of people that can be helped at once, and there's no duplicates in there. And then, just a little bit about our process. It really does start with a referral or a client coming to us. Based on the referral, we schedule a, we schedule an intake meeting, an in-person meeting at one of our offices in either Rawway, Newark, or Summit. We've also had some times where we've gone to see the client as well, really whatever's easiest for them. And after they submit their intake forms, we're able to enter them into a system called HIMSS, which stands for Homeless Management Information System. That's just a way of, so if someone experiencing homelessness goes to an organization, that organization can log into HIMSS and be able to see any help they've already received, what they may need, et cetera. And then, after our meeting and the HIMSS documentation's completed, we're able to... connect them with a case manager who has connections with landlords to help find them permanent housing. In the meanwhile, we're able to offer them temporary shelter at either a hotel or another shelter in the area. And these, yes, these cage manager, case managers have access to lawyers. They, some specialize in providing employment for veterans. So it's really not just about getting them a house, it's about giving them back the control of their own lives and addressing all of the issues that are needs that they may have associated with homelessness, not just shelter. So I included some photos of us with our, with some of the clients that we've already housed. In our first week, we were able to house four veterans in just the first week, and now in just a month, we are up to 10. These are some of the photos with our clients. And like I said, the direct meetings with them, I think it makes them feel a lot more supported. And it's also very, been, as an intern, it's been very fascinating to listen to their stories. And I think it just makes them feel more supported to meet with us directly and develop relationships with us so that, you know, they feel like they're taking control of their life, their life too. For too long, veterans have been subjected to a reality that does not ensure them a roof over their head, food, the basic needs. Someone, our current system is failing them because someone who goes and risks their life for their country should not have to come back and worry about basic human rights like shelter and how to feed their families. I think that it is through organizations like Bridges and BVH who work on the local level that we eventually make our way up to federal changes and work from the ground up to empower change regarding homelessness, and eventually be able to alleviate it for veterans and everyone. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you so much. Wow, you got a fantastic intern there, Rich. Boy, that was fantastic, really, really great.
Delia's not even here to take prep.
I know. She's here in spirit, though. All right, so those were three great presentations. We're now on to the ordinance for hearing portion of our meeting, and we do have a few, we have five of them. So I know Councilwoman Toth will be busy in this section, but at this time, Madam Clerk, will you please read the first finance ordinance for hearing?
Ordinance number 25-3348, bond ordinance providing for the improvement of the sewerage facility owned by the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties, appropriating $275,000 therefore, and authorizing issuance of $261,500 in bonds or notes for financing same.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Toth.
Okay, thank you, Council President. This bond ordinance relates to the joint meeting, our shared sewer plant with other communities in the area. The joint meeting regularly assesses its members for capital projects, and Summit plans for this and sets aside funds each year. Current assessment is for slightly more than anyone anticipated and more than we had set aside. Hence, we must contribute an additional $275,000 to meet our assessment, and must issue an additional $261,500 in notes or bonds to raise the funds. And as ever, the 5% difference in those two numbers is the down payment and comes from the sewer authority's operating budget. I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
My second. Thank you so much. All right, I'm going to declare the hearing open. Do any members of the public at this time wish to speak about this ordinance? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing section. Members of council, comments, questions? Nope, all right, I will close the hearing on this. Let's move on to finance, the second finance. Madam Clerk, will you please read 25-3349?
Number 25-3349, bond ordinance appropriating $5,501,000 and authorizing issuance of $5,238,000 in bonds or notes of the city for various improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. This bond ordinance stems from the city's 2025 budget and authorizes issuing bonds or notes sufficient to cover our 2025 capital plan. I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
My second. Thank you. All right, I'm going to declare the hearing open. Do any members of the public wish to speak on this bond ordinance?
Yes, anonymous. I don't support it. I don't support it because I believe there's just too much shady, kind of backdoor stuff going on here in Summit. I'll get into that more thoroughly during my public comments, but I don't support this Council President. I don't support Summit leadership. Mike McTurner is a bully, therefore I do not support this, and I do not support this
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments?
You know I'd comment on this.
Of course, Henry.
My name is Henry Bassman. I live at Hec Jean Hartley Road, and I think allocating funds for lighting Upper Tatlock Field and for an unnamed upgrade of the Investors Bank Field is premature and irresponsible at this time. You still have no overall plan for Tatlock Park and the fields in it. You have not delineated any permissible or restricted usage of the fields in it. You have not, excuse me, you have yet to present evidence other than a highly redacted and unsubstantiated report that the fields are necessary to meet the demands of this community only with game lights. I think this ought to be removed, these two appropriations ought to be removed from this, this resolution.
Thank you for your comments.
Jocelyn Modesto, 61 Butler Parkway. In addition to the letter that was recently sent to council from representation for the TCPA, which speaks for itself, I am here to personally object to the portion of this ordinance that earmarks $650,000 for stadium lights at Tatlock. I am disappointed and frustrated at the way this entire process has played out. The concerns raised during the initial neighborhood listening sessions fell on deaf ears. The creation of the Tatlock Neighborhood Committee was insincere, as there had been many reassurances with little action, follow-through, or success in managing any issue relevant to the residents around the fields. There was no true effort to unburden the neighborhood of issues it currently faces before pursuing the additional burdens that will come with lights. The expert environmental and traffic studies ordered by the DCP were woefully inaccurate and flawed. The DCP sidestepped their own four-step process that they themselves created specifically for this project. Additionally, the neighborhood was repeatedly told that the $650,000 in the budget this year was for replacement lights on Upper Tatlock. According to the very last-minute resolution that was added to this meeting agenda and posted only on Friday afternoon, it appears that is now interchangeable for any part of the lighting project at either Tatlock Field, which is disingenuous. To attempt to pass a resolution that negatively affects many residents with no notice to them during a time when many people are away speaks volumes to how little respect this council has for the Tatlock community. Despite the best efforts of the Tatlock community to express their concerns, highlight safety issues, and explain the struggles that already exist with daytime field use, we are once again being steamrolled. I respectfully request that council remove any funding for Tatlock Stadium Lights from this ordinance. Thank you.
Maggie Baumann, 40 Lewis Avenue. I had a hard time composing my thoughts for tonight because I can't even believe that this is happening. Last spring, when the Tatlock Community Engagement Plan was introduced, I thought it looked like a dog and pony show, a nice plan to placate the neighbors while the DCP and council worked to move forward no matter what. David Guido assured me it was not, and here we are. The dogs and ponies are gone, and the DCP is moving forward with their original plan. Steps three and four of the engagement plan that called for revisions and feedback were never done. Apparently, not a single good idea came from the small meetings with the neighbors last spring, the Google Doc with hundreds of comments and concerns, the pep rally, I'm sorry, the project meeting that was held in December, the listening sessions earlier this year, or the Tatlock Task Force who weren't even told about this resolution. The DCP and council engaged the community, but they did not listen, and I don't think they ever intended to. There's no compromise, the neighborhood gets nothing. Members of this council claim that they are committed to safety and fighting overdevelopment. Together for Summit, you say. Adding lights at these two fields is dangerous for the Tatlock neighborhood. The inevitable removal of trees from a park to add parking will increase stormwater runoff and threaten houses along the brook. These are safety and overdevelopment concerns that our council should be fighting against. Council must reject this resolution, or does Together for Summit need an asterisk? Together for Summit, Tatlock Neighborhood not included.
Thank you for your comments.
Scott Baylor, 42 Lewis Avenue. I also object to the money that's being allocated for the Tatlock lighting project. Look, first and foremost, there's simply no need for it. I live right there, it's in my backyard. I go for walks there every single day. There's not games there every single day, there's not practices there every single day. It's often completely unused during the school year, during the summer, so I, I don't know what special interests are involved or what the motivation is here, but it cannot possibly be a need because I'm there, and it's not used when the light is out. Not only is there no need, but you are, all of you are ruining a community, really. I don't think any of you would want lights glaring into your home in your backyard. That is what you are voting for. Lights, noise, literally in our backyard. So I haven't heard anybody say, hey, I have a backyard that the kids can use after school, come onto my backyard. Nobody's doing that, but you're doing a toss. As proof of that, and as proof of concept, there's two houses up for sale right there, right at the end of Lewis Avenue, that are abutting the park. They're having trouble selling, and I wonder why. They're beautiful, brand-new houses, the largest in the whole street. They're not selling, because nobody wants to live next to a stadium that's being lit all night, every single day. And I know that there's been talk about, hey, like, we'll put timers on the lights, they'll shut off. None of these things are permanent. As we've discussed, your ordinances, you can overrule your own ordinances, and you don't even have to follow them. The tennis courts, kids turn on the lights after 10:00 PM every single night, it's very loud. So having another, you know, you know, public use item right there is, it's going to cause more noise, more disruption, and you're, again, you're just, you're ruining a community. It's not safe, there's no parking. Every single time there's a game there, Lewis Avenue becomes a one-way street. And look, what this is, is you're targeting the less fortunate, okay? This isn't going up, you know, in the, you know, areas where there's a $4 million houses, right? You're, you're sticking us with it. Again, always, it's always us. And so, look, I'm asking, begging, do not ruin a community, especially when there's literally no need for it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name's Hal Dillon. I live at 269 Ashland Road. My wife, Jody, and I are raising our five sons in town, all who are actively involved in the community and participate in Summit Youth, Sports, and Activities. In addition to be a parent, I have the privilege and responsibility of overseeing both the Summit Lacrosse Club and the Hill Taco Lacrosse Club. These are two volunteer-led organizations. We provide opportunities for nearly 700 girls and boys in Summit. Youth sports has always meant a great deal to me, personally and profoundly. When I was a youth and high school player, I lost my sister, my best friend, to a long battle with leukemia, though the crossfield became my sanctuary. It is where I found solace, strength, and a way to keep going. Today, in a world where kids are surrounded by screens and social media distractions, that same sanctuary is more important than ever. Beyond the mental and emotional value, town sports have never been more important financially. They offer affordable access to high-quality activities, teamwork, and character development. However, contrary to what you heard tonight, we are facing a limiting challenge, which is field space. Our fall lacrosse program starts in just a few weeks, and we're already reducing sessions because of a lack of demand, not because of a lack of demand or coaching, but because we simply don't have enough field availability. We currently share a single lit turf field with high school and youth sports. That means less time, fewer reps, and fewer opportunities for our youth to engage in something healthy, positive, and screen-free. All of that said, I'm actually incredibly hopeful and excited about the prospect of expanded field access. Lighting Tatlock Park is a tremendous opportunity to support and invest in the well-being of our youth. More field time means more kids can participate, more games can be played, more memories can be made, more lessons can be learned. I was here previously when 2,200 people signed a petition supporting these lights. I work with all of the youth organizations on a weekly basis, I would say 10, 11 months out of the year, trying to find field space, trying to navigate each other. So anybody who says we don't have a field space issue doesn't know what they're talking about. We have, we have an issue. Thank you very much for considering this very, very important investment in our community's future. Let's give the youth of Summit every chance to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
PJ Angler, 16 High Street. First off, I want to thank council for all the work they have done in terms of furthering this project. I know it hasn't been easy. There are, you know, certain people who have concerns and have raised those very vocally. I think anyone that's paid attention, read the studies, been to some of these meeting sessions, listened to the Q and A with regards to the traffic study, the environmental study, the field use study, and listened to what, anybody that's been actively involved, like Hal just talked about, this is a need. This is an absolute need. Hal referenced the petition of, you know, almost 2,200 people signed that, that was within two weeks' time. The numbers are far greater than that. The support for this project in town is overwhelming in favor of this. It's needed, and I, you know, urge council to move forward with this project and approve the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from the public? Okay, any comments from council? Councilwoman Kamelson?
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to make a quick comment just for, you know, the sake of transparency. We sent out a, we passed the budget earlier, earlier in the spring, and we sent out a mailer to everybody's home with the budget. And since then, so this is regarding this ordinance and ordinance number 253351, that number has increased by approximately $500,000. So I just wanted to, you know, like I said, for the sake of being transparent so people understand, you know, what we're doing, those numbers have increased. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Councilman Boyer?
So, and maybe our city administrator can talk about the bond, but included in this bond are stabilization to the Salt Brook, police and fire, roads resurfacing. There, there are thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars, maybe millions of dollars that are in this bond that are not just lights. So if we don't pass this, what happens to the money that we're supposed to be allocating to police and fire, road resurfacing, stabilization of the Salt Brook, and so on? to police and fire, road resurfacing, stabilization of the salt brook, and so on? Ms. Baldwin, can you shed some light on that?
Through you, Council President. They're all bundled into one ordinance. So if we table this ordinance or don't pass this ordinance, then, right now, none of those projects get done. The best thing that you could do after that is to do a new ordinance in September. You'd have a public hearing the end of September, 20 days a stop. Nobody would be getting equipment or any of the other projects going until November. Another point that I just want to make is that just because you approve a bond ordinance, there still has to be a bid period. So for any project, if it's over the bid threshold, we have to go out to bid, that has to go on a meeting, council has to vote again to award to a vendor a project or an equipment purchase, anything that's over that bid threshold. So we often have the phrase, "two bites at the apple." That's the other bite at the apple. So the bond ordinance authorizes going out to funding for the monies. When you actually award a project is when you're awarding those funds, and they're certified by the CFO. If I may, I take my job very seriously, and we did have an amendment to the capital plan. I wasn't happy about it. I had to do it because what happens when you do bond ordinances, so everybody understands is there are Section 20 costs. Section 20 costs are the cost of financing. So when I go out for a bond sale, I have a financial advisor, I have to pay Moody's, Fitch, Standard &amp; Poor's, I have the auditors, I might have engineering costs depending on the project. Those are all soft costs, and I didn't properly account for all of the soft costs within the projects. That's why the capital budget was amended. That's why the ordinances were increased in different capacities, depending on the amount of the ordinance and what we needed in Section 20. Again, if we don't spend the capital money, let's say I don't use all of the Section 20 money, or a project comes in underbid, that money can be canceled, put to capital surplus, and then it can be used, as we often do, to offset taxes in the subsequent years. So I hope I've answered everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baldwin. So just to be clear, that is no radio equipment, turnout gear, rescue equipment used by the fire department, drone equipment for the police department, our trash transfer trailer which caught fire. These are absolutely things that we need. Like the city administrator said, well, we don't have to spend the bond money, right? Like, on the lights, I'm not trying to be disingenuous, but I don't want services for something that we actually need and is going to spend the money on to not be approved. It's important. Secondly, I respect everybody's opinion. I grew up in Summit, especially around the Washington area, and to say that we're targeting the less fortunate is absolutely ridiculous. There's no one less fortunate around that area. I grew up there. There's not a less fortunate area. Several blocks up the street, Dennis Place and Lieber Street, okay, I'll give you that, but don't come up here and say the less fortunate area. I respect people's opinion, but, I mean, but let's be honest about it, all right? You don't want the lights. Say that. I get it. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Other comments from council?
Council President.
Councilman Smallwood?
Yes, I just had a question to Ms. Councilwoman's comment about an additional $500,000. I wasn't quite sure what she was referring to.
Well...
Was that the soft costs that...
Yes, that Tammy just spoke about.
Gotcha, okay. I just wanted to, Ms. Modesto mentioned that this resolution was added last minute. This was not added last minute, and if I correct me if I'm wrong, City Clerk, that the agenda always goes public on Fridays?
Always.
Okay.
Councilwoman Kamelson?
Thank you, Council President. I just had one more comment about, like, we hear this a lot about projects, you have two bites at the apple, and this is the first bite. And I just wanted to make the point that it's not really a first bite when it's wrapped up, and I'm not going to oppose this, but it's not really a first bite when it's wrapped up with so many other projects. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Good comment. Councilwoman Toth?
And if I may, Council President, there were just a couple of remarks to which I wanted to respond, sort of clarifying. The $650,000 in the capital budget is specifically for the light, to replace the lights on upper Tatlock Field. That is not for any lighting project in investors' field lower Tatlock. The monies that are, the capital monies that are allocated there are largely to improve the ADA accessibility. And there may be something else, City Administrator Baldwin, but it certainly isn't anything to do with the lights. It is other infrastructure around there to make it more accessible for all.
Thank you. Other comments? All right, I just, a quick comment to wrap up. Yeah, so this is, as you can see, our budget process starts, like, last year, particularly around capital projects, and it's a back-and-forth, there's engagement for the community, there's presentations. I do want to thank Councilwoman Toth again, around particularly the capital budget. This is sort of where the rubber begins to hit the road. Like, she did a great job as Finance Chair in getting a lot of input from department heads on their priorities, ranking things, input from different council people, and came out with a pretty robust sort of wish list that made it into our capital budget that was approved at the beginning of May, I believe. So now it's time to fund this. So there's been a lot of vetting, but, you know, each one of these projects in here will have to be authorized to go out to bid. This is where you get granularity, where there'll be separation. It's very difficult to take something that's been vetted as a part of a process and then pluck things out. There's a time for when these things will be, have a focused spotlight on, that much you can then really dig into making decisions around these things. So I get there's the one thing that people have spoke about in here. There will be an opportunity to spend this money that will be specific to that, where voting against that will not affect all the other things that, as people have mentioned, are kind of real needs in our capital budget. So that's my comment. Okay. Any other comments from council? All right, I'm going to declare the hearing closed on this ordinance. Moving on to the third finance ordinance. Madam Clerk, will you please read ordinance 25-3350?
Bond ordinance appropriating $2,085,000 and authorizing issuance of $1,985,000 in bonds or notes of the city for various sewer utility improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken in the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Toth?
Thank you, Council President. This bond ordinance stems from the Sewer Utilities 2025 Budget and authorizes issuing bonds or notes sufficient to cover the utilities 2025 capital plan. I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
I second.
Okay, our hearing is open. At this time, would any members of the public like to comment on this ordinance? Okay, members of council? No? Okay. All right, with that, I'm going to close the hearing and move on to finance number four. Madam Clerk, will you please read 25-3351?
Bond ordinance providing for improvement of parking facilities in and by the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, appropriating $2,997,000 therefore, and authorizing issuance of $2,854,000 bonds or notes of the city for financing such appropriation.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Toth?
Thank you, Council President. This bond ordinance stems from the Parking Utilities 2025 Budget and authorizes issuing bonds or notes sufficient to cover its 2025 capital plan. I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
I second.
All right, I'm going to declare the hearing open. At this time, do any members of the public wish to comment on this ordinance? Okay, oh, yes.
I'm just curious...
Name and address, please.
Fritz Alum, Nine Russell Place.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm curious as to, that seems like a lot of money. What exactly does that cover, and where specifically are the projects that that supports? What parts of town? That seems like a lot of money.
Thank you for your comment. Other comments from the public?
Yes, you're not getting my name, you're not getting my address, and I'm against it, because how dare you ask him for his personal, private, sensitive information? How dare you? Nobody has to surrender their Fourth Amendment right to express their self and their freedom of speech. Would you like it if some, where do you live, Mike? Why don't you tell everybody where you live? What's your phone number? What's your debit card number? Don't be asking the public where they're near. The way you snapped at him, what's your name, what's your address? This is why I come to this meeting, because in a way, you tried to have this lawyer remove me. Well, actually, you did fall back, I will give you that. It's you, through the chair to you. Ever since January 23rd, 2023, in Madison, when you cut off a woman who was having a moment of silence for two people who died of an opiate overdose, you cut her off repeatedly, demanding her name and address. Since that day, I have never given my name and address at a meeting. Don't ever let people like this force private, sensitive information out of the public. We are the people. You weren't even elected, Mike. You were appointed. And watching the way you bullied Councilwoman Michelle, that was so despicable. You always get the last word. You were appointed because you do the dirty work for the Summit Republicans who are the leadership team. Don't be asking people for the private sense of information.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments from the public? We'll respond.
No, no. All I want to ask, I did ask some questions, and I didn't get any answers, and I've...
We'll respond to your questions.
Okay, you're going to respond?
Yeah.
Thank you.
[inaudible]
Right.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Don't you worry.
I'm sorry.
Any other comments from the public? Okay, any comments from council?
Well, if I may, Council President...
Yes, please, Councilwoman Toth, if you'd like to read what's in it.
Respond to Mr. Alum's question, and I'm going to invite City Administrator to correct me. But you may be aware that there has been considerable damage to the fourth tier of the tiered parking garage that is closed. We're doing some rearranging and all of that, and Councilmember Smallwood is in charge of that piece of it. But earlier this year, an engineering firm made a presentation to council in a council meeting and gave us a guesstimate of what it would take to repair the tiered parking garage, the upper story, the stairwells, some other pieces of it. And we basically cut that number in half and decided half and half between 2025 and 2026. So this is, it would be nice if this was the number. We're going to find out. We did our best, and...
Is that specifically for that one property?
Largely for that one property, and every year, the Parking Authority gets a much smaller capital budget amount, I think it was $50,000 this year, for routine capital improvements on its various parking lots, other parking lots. But it's largely the tiered garage on Springfield Avenue.
Expansion and parking, just maintenance.
Well, maintenance improvement, yes.
Yeah, in addition, if you look at the ordinance, it's got, let's see, municipal and parking fields being located, including without limitation the tier garage by the upgrade of the roof and the stairwell, and the City Hall parking lots by upgrade of the lighting and improvement. And that's paving, structures, entrances, equipment, work and materials. And that's what the, this specific bond would go to. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
And further, the bond is repaid from parking revenues rather than as part of the city's budget.
Which will...
Thank you. Other comments from council? Okay, I'm going to close the hearing on this ordinance. Okay, Councilwoman Toth, you're off the hook for now. Last ordinance for hearing is a safety and health one. Madam Clerk, will you please read 25-3352?
An ordinance abening Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-13.1, Turning Prohibitions of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit.
Thank you so much. Councilman Boyer?
Thank you, Council President. This is ordinance number 25-3352. It was introduced on July 1st, and this measure adds River Road at Iris Road to our list of designated turn prohibitions. Specifically, it forbids westbound River Road traffic from making a left turn southbound on the Iris Road, and northbound Iris Road traffic from making a left turn westbound onto River Road. So the intent is to improve the safety and traffic flow at this busy T-intersection by eliminating conflicting left-turn movements that have contributed to, some say, near-miss collisions during peak-hour congestions, and I can agree to that. I've made that left turn a couple of times, so. I move to open this ordinance for a final hearing.
Second.
Thank you. All right, we're going to open the hearing on the safety and health ordinance. Would any member of the public like to comment, please?
Good evening. Peter Kane, 3 Iris Road. A little nostalgia. When my parents moved me and my younger sister to Summit from New York City in 1965, we moved to Shady Side Avenue, a wonderful street I'm sure you all know. My parents, if they couldn't fall asleep, they would count kids instead of sheep, and there were 86 kids under the age of 18 on Shady Side Road in 1965. 25 years ago, my parents bought number 3 Iris as their retirement home, and Peggy and I bought it from them in dinner renovation about 10 years ago. It is the sixth house I've lived in Summit. Not a Summit, you know, wasn't born here, but I love this town, as many of you know. This ordinance has come about, first of all, through the wonderful cooperation of Adam Schreger and the City Engineer Department. He has been an expert communicator. He has been very indulgent of communications from me and all of the neighbors. He has been a wonderful partner for you, the council, and for us on Iris Road. Up to and including a traffic study last year, which showed something in the order, I don't have the numbers in front of me, of a 600% over-usage because of cut-through on Iris Road. So I clearly stand in support of this resolution. I don't think we have 86 kids on the block now, but Peggy and I are now the old senior citizens. I'm awaiting grandchildren, I don't have any yet, but there's probably about 30 or 40 kids on Iris Road who walk to Washington School. We have a lot of kids walking to the municipal golf course. It is a clear safety issue, and I would appreciate your support for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Henry Bassman, 18 Hartley Road. I appreciate that this will relieve traffic from Iris Road, and Iris Road's a very narrow road, but without some modification to River Road, this will cause a lot of problems. You see, River Road narrows to one lane by the time you get to Woodland. Last week, I made a left turn onto Woodland, and I had to wait for other cars to pass, and I saw a truck and several cars backed up. Now, you know that in rush hour, River Road, that part of River Road is backed up almost to Shoredale's Mall. So if this plan is implemented, it'll relieve Iris Road, it'll put a lot more traffic on Woodland, but it will cause a lot of problems on River Road. I spoke to Councilmember Boyer about this on July 4th, and I hope in the future, if I don't happen to be here, you remember what I'm saying and see if you can do something to alleviate the problems that this will cause to other people. So that's my comment. So that's my comment.
Thank you very much, great comment. Other comments from the public?
Yeah, I'm like against it because land use developers are the ones that are like in charge of you guys, and that's where the bullying comes from. So, against that one, too. Land use developers, the attorneys that you're all worried about being sued by, are the ones that call the shots, you know? Build, baby, build, right? So, maybe that's who's being the bully. You seem to think it was yourself. Wonder why? You know, but you'll get the last word tonight. That's part of why you were appointed, not elected. People represent you all up there, and then sometimes they get someone appointed to do the dirty work and do the hit pieces and have the last word and attack people who are like lone wolves. So, yeah. And I don't like this blue tape that has these Xs and these arrows, I don't understand it.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments from the public, please?
Peter Sebel, 11 Greenfield Avenue in Summit. I'm not against the ordinance as written. If I understand things correctly, separate from the ordinance, River Road is a county road, so some of that had to get approved by the county, these changes. It would be nice if they maybe, to alleviate, I forget your name now.
Mr. Bassman.
Henry's name, Henry's concern. It would be nice if they maybe set up a separate turn lane to make that left turn onto Woodland. I know one of the issues I have when I'm coming up getting onto Greenfield Avenue, and I don't have any option except to, depending which direction I'm coming from, to go into Greenfield Avenue off of River Road because it's a dead-end street. There's a section of the road which is yellow striped to close off, I forget what the reason is for it, but anyway, I've checked with the local police, and they have no objection to me pulling onto that yellow road with my turn signal on, so that traffic can continue to move on River Road. So, you know, a left turn lane designated would be helpful in Henry's situation. Thank you.
Thank you, good comments, thank you. Other comments, please? Okay, comments from council. Councilman Boyer.
Actually, raise my hand, I just caught myself.
Love it.
There are 21 kids on Iris Road. And, you know, I appreciate the residents for reaching out to me and giving me their opinion on this because this was in the works prior to me, and, you know, I'm always concerned about whether this is the right decision or not. And I couldn't knock on the 50 doors that was down there, and I can, but you saved me a lot of time, actually, so that was good. As a kid, we used to ride our bikes to the Short Hills Mall. You can't do that anymore. It is, I mean, it is dangerous. I didn't give this a second thought when I looked at it with our city engineer, Schreger. And Mr. Bassman, we will look in, we'll look into that, you know? Last thing is, traffic is a problem all throughout town, so do not drive between the hours of 4:00 and 7:00. No, but thank you.
Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. And I also support this ordinance, but I note it's going to increase pressure on Woodland Road, which also sees the heavy River Road traffic after they've negotiated that left-hand turn. So I think the city should install additional traffic calming measures on Woodland Road, along with prohibiting left turns in and out of Iris. And specifically considering the changed traffic pattern this ordinance is going to create, I believe we should rethink installing a traffic circle at the intersection of Woodland Road and Canoe Brook Parkway. Director Schreger, who can't be here tonight to defend himself, has noted that traffic circles calm traffic more effectively than do four-way stop signs. And slowing cars down rather than having them come to a complete stop and start again is also better for the environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilwoman Calmerson.
Thank you, Council President. I'm sorry, I didn't get your, was it Mr. King? I'm sorry, I didn't. Okay, thank you for all of your kind words about Director Schreger. He works so hard for the city, and I really just don't think he always gets the credit he deserves, so we appreciate that. We're going to tell him to watch this and all of your comments, and thank you. I support this ordinance. We do have some more work to do on Woodland. You know, there have been some resident requests for, you know, speed bumps, and we're working on Canoe Brook and that intersection, so we're aware, and we have more work to do. And we look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Bassman and Mr. Anonymous, I couldn't agree with you more. Unfortunately, River Road is a county road, and we're very limited to what we can decide without their approval. And a large part of the traffic congestion is overdevelopment. That's being actually forced on us to build affordable housing. But as you eloquently said, Mr. Anonymous, there are bullies out there, and the only people that are actually benefiting from this are the developers. Right? So if we're not, if our hands weren't being forced to do something to develop, and I believe there is a new development that is going to be starting at some point on the corner of River Road and Morris Avenue, which I believe has, what, 42 units?
47.
47.
Your panel, Park.
47 units? Wait till that goes in. The traffic's going to be even worse because we're being forced to build certain developments. And unfortunately, there's just nothing that we can do about it at this time. But I am glad, I know that Iris Road is, it's dangerous making a left-hand turn from, you know, any street coming down onto River Road, trying to make a left-hand turn. But, you know, I think this is a great step, and I applaud the Safety Committee for doing this, and look forward to hearing some other suggestions on how to have some traffic calming measures.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilman Palowski.
Councilman Boyer, do you know, are there any NASCAR drivers on Iris Road? And if there are, how are they supposed to get out of their street?
Well, it's a, Canoe Brook's a one-way there. You can't turn left. You can't turn left onto River Road, so that's a bad joke. NASCAR's all left-hand turns.
Other comments from council? Just to wrap up, I would, I appreciate Mr. Bassman's comments. I'm all for this, but I sometimes think, like, traffic, solving things, it's like whack-a-mole. You solve one thing and something else pops up, and so you have to be very, very diligent to say, this is an important part of a process, and we're going to have to keep going. You just can't stop, and as Councilman Smallwood said, we're going to have a lot more development down there. There's another project in Chatham that's going to get approved that'll dump more traffic onto River Road. So we've got to work with the county. It takes a while to get them to do things, but that doesn't mean we can't, we have to keep pressuring them to do that. And I know Director Schreger has a very good relationship with them, and as we see results, and I think one of the obvious ones is going to be increased traffic on Woodland, we have to be very aware of that. So those are great comments. Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I had one more thing that I did want to mention. As was pointed out, the blue tape is actually something that I'm very proud of, is actually part of our youth academy program. That's a two-week program where I believe it's from 5th grade to, or 6th, 7th, and 8th grade? Is that right, Chief? Our youth program, 6th, 7th, and 8th?
6th, 7th, and 8th graders come in, what's that? Said he didn't trust me?
Oh, sorry. Always trust the mayor. It's a very, it's a great program. I know my son was, ended the sixth year, or when he was in 6th grade, and he really, really loved it, and unfortunately, it happened through COVID, so he missed his 7th and 8th grade. And it's our Police Youth Academy program that's put on by our officers, and it's just, the graduation, I believe, is this Friday, correct? So, congratulations.
I felt bad after she explained that.
That's all right, just in case other people had questions about the blue tape. So it's really for our youth academy program.
All right, thank you. Other comments? All right, we're going to close the hearing. That is it for our hearing portion of our meeting. Now we're going on to our ordinances for final consideration, so we'll vote on all these ones we've just had hearings on. Madam Clerk, will you please read First Finance 25-3348?
Bond ordinance providing for the improvement of the sewerage facilities owned by the Joint Meeting of Essex and Union Counties, appropriating $275,000 therefore, and authorizing issuance of $261,500 bonds or notes for financing same.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. Having recently closed the hearing on this ordinance, I move for its final adoption.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Calmerson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, the Second Finance Order. Madam Clerk, will you please read 25-3349?
Bond ordinance appropriating $5,501,000 and authorizing issuance of $5,238,000 in bonds or notes of the city for various improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the City of Summit in the County of Union, New Jersey.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. Having recently closed the hearing on this ordinance, I move it for final adoption.
I second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Calmerson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, Finance Number 3. Madam Clerk, will you please read 25-3350?
Bond ordinance appropriating $2,850,000 and authorizing issuance of $1,985,000 bonds or notes of the city for various sewer utility improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. Having recently closed the hearing on this ordinance, I move it for final adoption.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Calmerson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. Last Finance Ordinance for Consideration. Madam Clerk, will you please read 25-3351?
Bond ordinance providing for the improvement of parking facilities in and by the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, appropriating $2,997,000 therefore, and authorizing issuance of $2,854,000 bonds and notes, or notes, of the city for financing such appropriation.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. Having recently closed the hearing on this ordinance, I move it for final adoption.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Calmerson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, Madam Clerk, will you please read the Safety and Health Ordinance, 25-3352?
An ordinance amending Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-13.1, Turn Prohibitions of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit.
Thank you very much. Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Council President. Having recently closed the hearing on this ordinance, I move it for a final adoption.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Calmerson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, moving right along. We have one ordinance for introduction this evening. It's from the Community Programs and Parking Services Committee. Madam Clerk, will you please read the ordinance ID number 12062?
Council President, does Councilman Smallwood need to explain before we?
Yes, actually, that's, thank you very, very much, Madam Clerk. Councilman Smallwood, I believe you have a, you're going to introduce a slightly amended ordinance.
Correct. Thank you, Council President. If you had seen the original council packet that was released on, made available to the public on Friday, our parking director, as you, as you all know, that the, on the tier garage, there are the top two floors, certainly has been recommended to us to close down because of some repairs that need to be made there, hence part of the $2 million bond ordinance of, for the parking services. So, our parking director, Nicole Sawicki, had come up with three different scenarios. And we originally had chosen scenario number one, which was in the original packet, but after some conversations with some residents, some shoppers, as well as some downtown shop owners, we've decided that option two was probably the better option, so that we don't displace any shoppers on our, the ground floor of the tier garage. So what I would like to propose to council is that we change from option one to option two, which would give us a total of 119 spaces by closing, or by changing the Broad Street Garage top level, which is now currently labeled as non-resident commuter parking, and we move the non-resident commuter parking over to the Sampson Lot, which is part of the middle school, which would give them 52 spaces. So with this change, rather than shutting down the shopper lot on the tier garage, we feel like it was better to reduce the number of non-resident commuter parking and allow that for spaces in the top-tier garage, top level of the Broad Street Garage for our shoppers as well as our employees of the downtown. So with that change, I would like to propose that change for this ordinance.
Does anyone on council have a question about the difference?
Council President.
Yes, Councilman Boyer.
I know we're going to.
I think at this point, we should probably read the ordinance title and then.
Perfect, okay.
Make the motion.
Good, yeah, thank you, Madam Clerk, as always. Okay, so, Madam Clerk, will you please read the ordinance for introduction, ID 12062?
12069.
Oh, that's right, the new one, sorry.
An ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-25, Regulations for the Movement and Parking of Traffic on Municipal Property and Board of Education Property, subsection 7-25.2, Municipal Parking Lot Areas.
Thank you very much.
Make a motion.
You've got to introduce it.
Yes.
Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. This is ordinance ID number 12069. This ordinance is proposed to amend the section, the Section 7-25.2, D Lot 6, Broad Street Garage, designating the top section of the level, the open section of the top level of the Broad Street Garage as employee and resident parking with current park, with a current parking permit. The ordinance also proposes an amendment to 7-25.2, Lot 9, Sampson Lot, designated spaces 500 through 596 to non-resident commuter parking by reservation only.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Um, yeah. Can I ask, since it was amended?
The council can make comments.
Oh, okay, we're just introducing it, so, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to make sure that in that area, which is, was just unique, there are not a lot of driveways. There are residents that don't have driveways, and they park in the middle school parking lot. And I don't know if, I know this is probably more during the day that folks are going to be parking there, the out-of-town. Just want to make sure that it doesn't impact the residents on Bivore. We worked really hard to get that, like, together, and the other residents in that area that don't have driveways that park in the lot. It may not be a big deal at all, just want, and I know we have some time, but if Councilman Smallwood could just listen to that for me, I appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you. All right, there's no other questions on the change. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Calmerson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay.
The hearing will be on the.
And then, yeah, the hearing date for this ordinance will be September 3rd.
Wednesday.
Which, yes, is a Wednesday, Wednesday after Labor Day. All right, moving right along, we're at our resolutions part of our meeting, and we have a few to go through this evening. a few to go through this evening. First resolutions are for safety and health. Councilman Boyer, do you want to start with the first resolution there, please?
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID Number 12020, confirming the mayor's appointment of police lieutenant and sergeant. So as a result of vacancies declared in the police department on July 1st, 2025, the mayor and the safety committee has recommended Detective Sergeant Charles Robinson for a promotion to the rank of lieutenant and Detective Rudy Garita for a promotion to the rank of sergeant, both effective on July 30th, 2025. And I move this for adoption. But I just wanted to make one more point. We, this year, we've interviewed in every position outstanding candidates. Like, we have an outstanding police department. Like, the chief was just up here talking about the accreditation. So there are 507 law enforcement agencies in the state of New Jersey, and chief, you know, don't get on me if I got that number wrong, but less than 32% made it for this accreditation. So that's 162 towns, and Summit is one of them. And that just emphasizes how difficult it is to make these decisions when your whole police department are overachievers. It is like, you know, it, so there are several outstanding officers that interviewed for both promotions, and their professionalism and achievement made the decision exceptionally difficult, something we have come to expect in this great department. And tonight's resolution is in no, does in no way diminish their merit, and I want to make that a point. But the exceptional alignment of Detective Sergeant Robertson's and Detective Guerrero's experience, Garita's experience with the strategic needs of the bureau just really aligned with what the chief wanted to do, and, you know, I'm in support of that. So I move this resolution for adoption.
Second.
All right, at this time, are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this resolution? All right, members from council? Comments from council? No? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Safety and Health, Number Two, Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID Number 12051, declaring a vacancies in the police department, two police officers. As we all know, during this last budget, we budgeted for two new police officers, and I move this for a final adoption.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? No, I would just say, again, this is all part of our budgeting process. So this is where we've allocated money for new staff. I think this council has made it very clear that safety is a big priority in our town, and we've invested in technology, we've created new laws around it, and we have added personnel to our already wonderful police department. And this is, this is two officers in addition to the two that were hired last year, if I'm correct. Yep. So, so again, love the follow-through here. All right, any other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, moving right along, we have Capitol Projects and Community Services. Councilwoman Hamlet is not here, so Councilman Boyer, you want to do number one?
Yep. Thank you, Council President. This is ID Number 12057, the Establishment of the Veterans Affordable Housing Project Committee, an appointment of members. As discussed in closed session, I move this for a final adoption. Second.
All right, any comments from the public? Please, Mr. Bassman.
Could we have the names of the people and their resume who are going to sit on this committee and what their qualifications are in terms of interaction with veterans?
Yes. Great question.
Yeah, because, yeah, it's important. Veterans need to talk to veterans, and people who've worked with veterans know what the needs are and how to relate to veterans. I had the pleasure of meeting Brittany McNeil and having great talk with her. She's the Bridges person who's taken over veterans' housing. She's extremely qualified. She's not here because she's on active duty. But this is a sensitive kind of a project, and it needs people who have the experience and the sensitivity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good comments. Other comments from the public? Comments from council? Yeah, I would just say, answer Mr. Bassman's questions, this committee is really, the genesis of this was a couple of months ago, having different conversations around affordable housing and needs, as well as a project that we could maybe get our community to rally and unite behind. And having discussions with various people, we came up with this idea to maybe, to attempt to create a, an all, an affordable, all-for-veterans you, project in Summit, somewhere. Somewhere is still a question mark. That's part of some of the work that the community, the committee's going to need to do. The, the committee is tasked with everything from fundraising, because if you go back and you look at the real success stories in creating affordable housing in Summit, two of the three were large public-private partnerships, where the community really got involved and raised money, got the thing going. And this, this committee is tasked with really doing the same thing. If we were trying to do something, the, the goal would be to do something like a 20-unit, all-affordable project, that's, you know, we're probably going to need capital, depending on if we, where we get the land, of anywhere from a million and a half to $2 million. So it, there will be a significant effort to raise money. So there, so we have people on the committee who are plugged into people in town, that's going to be part of it. The other part of this is actually understanding the rules on how to lever all the available resources that are out there for affordable housing projects, whether it's from the county, the state, or the federal government, to, to augment the capital that you raise to make these projects happen. And, and obviously, as, as Mr. Bassman noted, we need a plug into people who are very sensitive around the veteran community, because that's what we're looking to do. So the committee is made up of the mayor, myself, Ms. Hamlet, a veteran who runs Capps, Ms. Calmenson, those are all the, the council people. We have Scott Loykis from the zoning board, who has very, who's volunteered to draw mockups pro bono, to, to design, to design work and things like that, to help make this happen. Augusto Damaso from our, our land division will be part of it. The Elks are very involved. Rick Wolf will be a member. We are, we are speaking to the commander of the American Legion. We do not have a name yet from them, but we will. I know you know him, Henry. Nora Radist, our former mayor, is going to be on the committee. Dennis White, who is, probably knows as much about the capital structure and where to get funds from the state and the federal government and loans as anybody has agreed to serve. Jim Brady, another citizen, has very close ties to different veteran organizations that we might be able to get money from. And then we have a member of the clergy, Pastor Harriel, who's also a veteran. So we have a great group. When I broached this topic with people, they were incredibly excited. I will say this is a committee, but to make this work, it's going to take a community to make this work. So stay tuned, we're going to have a, a meeting probably in a couple of weeks to really kick things off. It's, it's not going to be easy. Everyone knows the issues with finding appropriate places and things like that, but I think if we can all get behind this, and that's my real hope, you know, we all want to make, you know, to have housing that people can afford in our town. It's a difficult issue, and particularly veterans, we had that presentation earlier today. You know, that's a, that's a community of people given to our country, and if we can give back, you know, in a small thing, to give them a decent place to live would be awesome. So I, I'm hoping that this will be a committee that people can get really behind, a project. There's going to be a lot that'll come out of this, so it's still very early days, we haven't even met yet. So, so just stay tuned around that.
Approximately 20 years ago, when Bill Rapp was the commander-
Mr. Bassman, can you use the- You have to speak to the-
I'm sorry.
Don't you time this?
Yeah.
Approximately 20 years ago, when Bill Rapp was the commander of Post 322 here in Summit, they wanted to turn the American Legion post into veterans' housing, and the common council stalled and declined and made it very difficult. And finally, the post had to sell their building. It's now Manhattan Bagel. So there's a great deal of interest, and as a person who has passed commander and vice commander now of the post and has advocated for this over the years, I can't tell you how delighted I am and how pleased at the recognition. It's really nice to say, "Thank you for your service," but that's just talk. You have to do something for people who don't have the, the, the kind of skills that we have and, and the kind of life that we have. And, and, and those people, there are a lot of hurting people out there. We were at war for 20 years, and there's a whole new generation of veterans that is suffering, and this will be helpful. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Henry. Yeah, as, if people who have tuned in to watch meetings over the last year, maybe longer than that, affordable housing can be a very contentious issue. We know that it has a lot of ramifications for people in town. The, the hope around doing a project like this is we can create a project that doesn't separate us, but brings us together in a common goal, where we can really get behind something that we can all be proud of, that we can get to happen. So I'm very excited about, about this, and I would ask the public, stay tuned. We're going to need a lot of other people to help out, to do things, to make this happen. And again, I'm excited.
Council President?
Councilman Boyer?
Just one quick comment. A, outstanding job of getting these group of people together for this, outstanding. And, you know, I just want to give a shout out to Dennis White. Dennis has, has come here on numerous occasions about the property uptown with the firehouse and his proposal. And to be asked to do this, and for him to agree to do this, he is a brilliant man, and it just shows the connection of getting something done. And I, I just wanted to publicly thank him. I'm, I'm glad that his name was on there, so that, that makes me really happy. So, thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Can I just make a brief, second statement?
No. Other comments from council? You're out of order, sir. I just spoke to- He's a veteran, he lives in our town. Can you, you'll have comments afterwards, thank you. Other comments from the public? Or not public, sorry, council. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Capitol Projects, Number Two, Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID Number 1201, which authorizes the City of Summit to submit its 2025 application to the Greening Union County Grant Program for the 2026 planting cycle. This is a matching grant and will reimburse the city for 50% of the cost to supply and install approximately 50 new trees, including red sunset maples, red buds, and other types of plants that the forest, the city forester approves. I had a conversation with, Aaron and I had talked about this, and, you know, the way, the way that this works, this is an outstanding program. It's, it's almost like when we put the, the crosswalk in on Morris and Butler Parkway, if we had to remove a tree, well, this would be something that would replace it. So if we do sidewalks and we have to remove a tree, we would replace it. So any construction through town, trees are important, right? We all like trees. So this is really good, and, you know, I support this. So, thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Do I have a second for this?
Second.
All right, comments from the public?
Peter Sibillo, Leving Greenfield Avenue in Summit. Just a question I have. If I donate to the Arbor Foundation, I'm entitled to get trees. Can the town use any of those trees? I mean, I don't need the trees personally on, on my property, but can the town use them?
That's a great question. I mean, we can, yeah, we could accept a donation, certainly. So I think that we could do something like that.
Okay, so I'd have to get ahold of someone to find out, you know, what trees they can use, so I can check off.
Yeah, we'll all get, reach out to you through our forester, who can talk about our needs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the public?
I apologize before for coming up at the, at that time. I just wanted to state that I just had a very nice conversation with some residents out front, and I just wanted to convey to you that they're very, very upset. They are very upset, and they're all asking questions why the engineer is not here tonight. Every meeting, he's in attendance, and we all had brief conversations about how it would have been imperative to have him here tonight. So I don't know if that was by, like, design or whatever, but the residents are very upset, and they all agreed that three minutes is not enough time. I elaborated on why I come to these meetings and why I speak out and do what I do and what it's all about, and, and they support me, and they're going to sign my petition to compel this council to have six minutes speaking time. If the public matters, if the community matters, talk is cheap. Give the public the proper opportunity to get their thoughts out. Some people are also disabled, and they have a harder time speaking, and they speak slower. So let's really think about when the public comes out to this meeting and they engage with the council, they're giving up their free time. It's very, very important that their voices are heard, and three minutes is not enough time. So next meeting, I'm going to bring a petition, I'm going to start an online petition, maybe I'll have one of the residents who's well-known, very reputable, spearhead the whole, the whole thing, because they all agree that three minutes is not enough. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Other comments from the public? All right, comments from council?
Council President, can I defer to our city administrator about Director Schreger's attendance?
If you want to address it, I don't-
Only because I feel the need to. I don't usually have to answer where every department head is, the department heads answer to me. I have Director Schreger standing outside at a sinkhole. We are dealing with a 10-foot-deep sinkhole on Broad Street. He is coordinating all the efforts there. That is an emergency. That is an emergency. It takes precedence, in my opinion, at my direction over being here this evening.
Other comments from council? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Capitol Projects number three, Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Council President. This is resolution ID number 12045, the sidewalk installation and maintenance plan. First adopted.
I think we skipped number three.
Oh, did I?
Yeah, we're on number three, the easement.
Thanks. That's because Aaron's not here, you know.
12042.
I got it. Thank you. This is resolution ID number 12042, which authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute an easement agreement with the owners of 69 Edgewood Road. The purpose of this, it would allow the owners to install a small landscape wall and plantings that will encroach into the city's right-of-way. The director of engineering, Director Schreger, has no objection, and the owners will assume full maintenance responsibility. And I move this for adoption, but I just want to say one thing is that Councilwoman Hamlet actually went out there, talked to the owner, surveyed the property, because at first, we weren't in agreement. We thought maybe it would look out of place on the street. We talked to some residents, wanted to make sure that this was, was a good thing to do. And it was good that Councilwoman Hamlet went out there and talked to the resident and really visually saw how it would be put up and, and what his, what his true purpose was for this and everything. So this, this really worked out, and the residents have no problem with it on the street. I understand the purpose of it, so I fully support this. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All right. Councilman Palowski?
So I went out there too, and, and I support this. A lot of you know, I've been trying to work on some historic preservation efforts in the town, and one of those things is to have consistent streetscapes, and, you know, this, this will go perfectly with Edgewood Road. There are other similar walls in there. And just for anybody who's wondering, the, because the city has a right-of-way over the first however many feet of everybody's property. So there are many, many residents in town that have improvements in that area, and this one will just go perfectly in the neighborhood, so I support this.
Thank you. Other comments from council? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Capitol Projects number four, Councilman Boyer.
All right. Thank you, Council President. This is resolution ID number 12045, the sidewalk installation and maintenance plan. It was first adopted in October 2019, and it was designated for a biannual review. Because of pandemic disruptions, there was a little, there was some problems with, you know, getting it up to date, but we finally got it done. So working with the CAPS team, which is Delia, excuse me, Councilwoman Hamlet, myself, and Director Schreger, decided to put in a colorful, dynamic guide so that you can easily distinguish what the future sidewalks are. Prior to this version of it, when you looked at it, you just saw all these lines, and you couldn't really distinguish what was going on. Now it's, like, clearly identified, and so I would like to move this for final adoption. But I also want to encourage the residents to go on to the city website and take a look at it. There are some plans for sidewalks, like Ashwood, we were just talking about Jefferson the other day, and the kids need to, you know, they need sidewalks, right? Like, 40 years ago, when I, when I was in school, there were, like, no cars on the street, right? So you could walk anywhere. But there, there are cars all over the place now. We've become a walking town, and sidewalks are inevitable, so go on, and I encourage you to, to do so. So, thank you, Council President.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Comments from the public?
Thank you for bringing up sidewalk, can you hear me? Thank you for bringing up sidewalks. We need more of them, especially in East Summit. The proposed Harmon project that I vehemently against, part of the reason is for safety. One of the safety issues is that there are no sidewalks on Broad Street going up from Ashwood to the hospital. There are limited sidewalks on, on Morris going up from that property towards the hospital as well. There are a bunch of broken sidewalks in the area, and I urge you to, to, you know, work on sidewalks. We need to be able to get around town. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name is Barbara Feringa. I am at One Little Wolf Road, and I'm wearing green because I want you to show me the green. I appreciate you added the colors, but my neighborhood, One Little Wolf Road, is not even on the map. So to walk from Franklin, this is the map for Franklin area. And the area of Ashland, not Ashwood, also is in desperate need of a sidewalk. And as I read this, it doesn't, I, I had understood that there would be, there was a proposal for a sidewalk on Ashland, but it doesn't appear on here, and I'm urging the, the, the council to consider that because the, because we are isolated from the rest of town with the absence of sidewalks. For those of us who live, I live on Drum, to get to Little Wolf, you have to go Drum Hill. Drum Hill is the last street before you exit Summit, and there are houses beyond that that don't even have access to a street, that just are face Mountain Avenue. And I understand from this, from the conversation around Iris, that county roads are hard to influence, and that Mountain Avenue is a county street, but as the, the Nokia Labs is going to be turned into, Nokia is leaving, now they're going to build there, our traffic is going to be accelerating, and we are in desperate need of safer ways to access town. Specifically, I've reached out to Claire, to Ms. Toth, and to Mr. Boyer around just being able to turn left or right off of Drum Hill. Right now is very concerning because of over, of shrubs and designs and poles. It's very, very dangerous. We need a sidewalk that goes all the way to the end of Summit, from Ashland, from the beginning of Summit to the, to, up Ash, from Mountain Avenue through Ashland. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments from the public? All right. Comments from council? Councilwoman Toth?
Thank you, Council President. And I'm going to sound a lot like Ms. Feringa here, but I, I do support this resolution, and I'm particularly pleased to see it includes a sidewalk on Glen Side Avenue, the funding for which was cut from this year's federal budget. And I'm also pleased to see it does, in fact, include a sidewalk on Ashland Road, from Silver Lake, I believe, to Stacy Court, and that's long overdue. However, this side, proposed sidewalk would definitely be improved if it extended at least as far west as Drum Hill Drive, because the residents on Drum Hill, on Club Drive, and on Little Wolf Drive have no safe way out of their neighborhood other than by car, and to turn out of Drum Hill Drive in either direction can be very dangerous because there are truncated sight, sightlines there. Despite the challenges, we, I, I would really support extending the sidewalk further west along Mountain Avenue to pick up the Summit houses west of Drum Hill Drive. New Providence has a sidewalk that goes just about to the Summit border, so the sidewalks could connect and giving everyone a safe way to traverse that entire section of road. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council?
Council President.
Councilman Boyer?
I am too happy that, to see the sidewalk on Glen Side Avenue. I'm also happy that we, we passed the resolution this year for funding, federal funding for next year, and I hope that funding comes through. We spent a lot of time on Glen Side Avenue, talking to the residents, a lot, and I agree with Councilwoman Toth. My daughter and I used to run from, like, driveway to driveway when I was campaigning. Very dangerous. So I'm glad to see that on there. Yes, there will be sidewalks on Ashland, like Councilwoman Toth said, to Stacy Court. We are looking into extending it. I think that was, that's a larger project, and there are some challenges with that. As you, as you know, there are driveways that abut that, that area, so there are, yeah, there's some challenges with that, so we're, we're discussing it. But overall, this is a pretty comprehensive sidewalk plan, so I definitely support it.
Thank you very much. Other comments from council? Yeah, I would just say, you know, this is a plan that can be amended. There's a whole section in here about prioritizations and things like that. So we've been building on a sidewalk plan for a dozen years, 15 years, and I'm happy that it's finally starting to use real technology so people can see it and see where it's coming and things like that. But input like that, you know, this is not going to be the same plan in a year or two years that it is today. And I think everyone up here, at one time or the other, has mentioned the importance of sidewalks and walkability and safety for our children. So I, I'm very happy that you made those comments, and I'm sure that the gears will start to churn about looking at the next set of priorities to add to this. So thank you. Other comments? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We're now on to community programs and parking services. Number one, Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 12053 to authorize submission of grant application 2025 Union County Kids Grant, Kids Recreation Trust Fund Grant Program and Execute Grant Agreement. This is sponsored by the Union County Board of Commissioners. The Kids Recreation Trust Fund provides funding to expand recreational opportunities for all children in residence in Union County. The DCP is requesting $100,000 from the 2025 Union County Kids Recreation Trust Fund to support this project. The application requires an individual resolution authorizing the submission of the, the grant application and commitment to, to provide the remaining 50%. So I move to approve this resolution.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Community programs, number two, Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 12054 to authorize execution of agreement with the county of Union to modify the cooperative agreement dated June 2014 as amended July 25, 2017. This is an annual agreement that we sign. That's why it says it's amended, because it's renewed every year. This is basically shared services so that we can utilize some funds from Union County. I believe this year, we're using it for Summit senior housing, fire pump replacement, and there was another one. David, what was the other one?
Routine stuff.
The senior, I'm sorry, this, the Summit Youth Center Program and the, also the Summit Senior Citizen Public Services and Transportation Program. So I move to approve this resolution.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Community programs, number three, Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. I am actually going to move this over to Councilman Palowski, since this is his committee.
Okay.
All right. There you go.
We had a resignation from the Tatlock Neighborhood Committee, and we are pursuant to our discussion during closed session. I move to appoint Paulette Strauss to the position.
I second.
All right. Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Community programs, number four, Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 12060, Support Tatlock, Tatlock Field Lighting Project. The common council and the Department of Community Programs have received tremendous support and interest from residents eager to help. With $650,000 in city budget allocated for upgrading the lights at Upper Tatlock Field, this resolution expresses council support for engaging with community fundraisers to complete the project in its entirety, which would include investors' field. With the ability to complete both fields, there is a cost savings over, over $100,000 due to freight savings, since it's a single shipment, mobilization savings, and savings from the subcontractor, and an incentive if two fields are purchased. What makes this so special is that as a group of residents have stepped up, not just in support, but with a commitment to help fund the remainder of the project. They understand the tremendous impact, this impact this will have on our youth, and have acknowledged just how important this investment is for the future of sports in Summit. Looking ahead, there is still much work to be done. No timeframes have been set. The Department of Community Programs will actively seek input from the Tatlock Neighborhood, the Department of Community Advisory Board, the Tatlock Task Force, and the broader sports community to guide how and when the lights will be used. This feedback will shape a future ordinance, which will come before council for final approval, ensuring that the implementation of the project reflects the values and needs of our entire community. This is a shiny example of what we can achieve when public-private investment, thoughtful planning, and community collaboration come together. I move this resolution for approved.
Second.
Comments from the public?
Maggie Valman, 40 Lewis Avenue. So I should have saved my comments from earlier until now, but this whole experience has just been so disappointing, and Councilman Smallwood has a lot of nice things to say about involving the community, but it hasn't happened yet, and I do not anticipate it happening in the future. The Tatlock community cannot support two-lighted fields. The council spoke tonight of traffic issues on Woodland, future problems from a new development at River and Morris. Adding two-lighted fields to this congested area with insufficient parking is reckless and dangerous. A few more hours of practice time for kids is not worth destroying the quality of life for the entire Tatlock neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
Henry Vassman, 18 Hurley Road. I'm passionate about my objection to this. I live far enough away from the Tatlock Fields that I can pull down my blinds, close my windows, and take out my hearing aids and be minimally affected by the lights on Tatlock, but it's the wrong thing to do, and that's why I'm opposing it. I received this mailing on Thursday, and it's ironic that in the mailing, it says that the Republican Together, Republican Together for Summit team says, "It's getting it done." Quote, "Protecting our quality of life," and it isn't true. When this resolution passes, and I have no doubt it will pass, it will cause a profound negative effect on the quality of life for all the neighborhoods surrounding Tatlock Fields. This resolution calls for game lights on both fields with no restrictions. That means two-night games would be allowed to take place simultaneously, seven nights a week, without any time limit. Some people may accuse me of being political, but this is not a Democrat, Republican, or independent issue. It's an issue about quality of life. There's nothing more important for homeowners than the quality of life at their home. Here is what the three candidates from the Republican Together for Summit group have said. Delia Hamlet didn't say anything. Delia Hamlet didn't say anything on her webpage about quality of life. Candidate Tom Seber says he stands, quote, "Firmly against development projects that threaten the quality of life of our residents." If this installation of game lights on two adjacent game fields isn't a development project that threatens the quality of life for residents who live nearby, I don't know what is. Councilman Kevin Smallwood says he is a strong advocate for, quote, "Projects that strengthen the community and improve quality of life." This resolution will neither strengthen the community, nor will it improve the quality of life for all, any of the people who live near Tatlock Park. If I were speaking to the voters of Summit, I would tell them to remember the Together for Summit Republicans who voted for this resolution. Remember how they damaged the quality of life in the Tatlock neighborhoods. Remember, they're supposed to represent all the people of Summit, not just a favored few. Remember, if they caused grave harm to one neighborhood, they could cause grave harm to your neighborhood. Your quality of life is at stake when you vote this November, next November. I urge that you vote for keeping all of Summit, Summit. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments from the public?
Jocelyn Modesto, 61 Butler Parkway. My apologies to Councilman Smallwood. I thought I made it clear in my initial statement that there was the ordinance I was referring to, and then the resolution. This was the resolution I was referring to that was put in on Friday with no, no notice to the affected residents. And I guess we shouldn't be surprised, because that's the way it's been this entire project. The residents around the field still have never received formal notice that this project is happening. It's been on us to alert all the residents around us, and some people don't have social media, and that, that shouldn't be on us. That should be on the city for an event, for a project that will dramatically impact people's lives, to notify the residents around the neighborhood. Turning to other problems with this resolution, it's premature. How can you put your stamp of approval on a project for a concept with so little details? No details have been provided about usage, timing, and parameters, and I understand Councilman Smallwood said those would be figured out, but it seems to me if you're going to approve a project and concept, you should have some idea of what those things will be. The last game at Tatlock on June 10th was during the day, and it was a disaster. There were no parking restrictions creating narrowed roadways, difficulty getting in and out of driveways, buses parked in areas that created one-way streets, people walking in the street with cars parked down both sides of Butler Parkway, creating dangerous pedestrian conditions. If events cannot be managed safely during the day, how are we supposed to have confidence that the city can handle keeping future events and our neighborhood safe at night if you were to put in stadium lighting? Councilman Boyer said that there is no economic argument to be made for lights going, or not being allowed to go in at Tatlock. But I think if you look at the way the fields are distributed around the city, all of the turf fields and all of the fields with stadium lights, or proposed stadium lights, are in Washington and Jefferson districts. That is not a coincidence, and that is definitely not a sharing of the burden for youth sports in Summit, throughout Summit. Everyone in Summit should be picking up this burden. So those are my objections to the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments from the public?
PJ Engler, 16 High Street. Just elaborating a couple of comments from earlier as well. So in some sense, I do agree with some of the comments that were made by Mr. Bassman. I just have a different view on it. This, this project is intended to benefit the greater Summit community. I do understand that there are certain residents nearby who don't like this project. That's their opinion, that's fine, but the broader community believes in this project, believes that it's needed. We think it's completely necessary, given the growth of youth sports over the, over the, you know, decades. There's just not enough space for our teams to play and practice. This other commentary about these, you know, disastrous night games every night, like, it's absurd. Youth sports, I've said this in previous comments before, it's two or three practices to one game per week. This is majority, this is going to be practice time. And in terms of the traffic, this is going to alleviate some of the traffic issues during those practice times. Right now, practices have to be piggybacked one on another. So you've got, you know, parents coming for drop-offs and pickups at the same time. It's creating more traffic. This would ease some of that tension. It's not even going to solve, you know, all the problems, but it's going to help the problem. It's, it's going to help our teams, you know, get in, as Hal mentioned before, practice times they need, getting more reps, getting students out there. This is important, and this is needed, and this is just one tool to get us, get us there. So I urge council to move forward with this project.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments from the public?
Hal Dillon, 269 Ashland Road. I also support the sidewalks on Ashland Road. Be a big help for my kids. Regarding the lights, and kind of echoing what PJ said, and, and I'm repeating myself a little bit, but I'm doing that deliberately, you know, one of my primary responsibilities is securing field space. And this isn't going to be seven games a night, two games simultaneously. This really is for practice time, and, and it is to create more opportunities for the children and the youth of Summit. And in my opinion, you know, it's going to increase the quality of life for our youth. And I can't think of a more important thing to do. You know, I, I represent the lacrosse club, I work very closely with, with football and soccer, I work very closely with the rec department. I can confidently tell you and tell the residents, we take a very, very thoughtful approach to scheduling. You know, we, we pay very close attention to what's going on at the schools, we pay very close attention to what's going on in town. We have a meeting every year. I mean, we, we spend more hours than you care to, to learn navigating this, and it is incredibly difficult. And I said this last time I spoke a few months ago. It's done with just sheer effort, and this will relieve some of that. And I, and I really think it will create more opportunities, you know, for, for, for youth. I also think, you know, we, we have very successful high school programs. We have a, an enormous number of student athletes. I would say more than most towns. And, and you've got, you've got great students that choose to stay in Summit, because they can find that, that balance between athletics and academics. And, and that starts at the youth level. And, and, you know, we've got, we're consistently winning state championships. And you, if you don't think, when our children are applying to college, that the colleges aren't looking at that and aren't paying attention to, to that student athlete that was able to navigate two or three seasons, and that's taught at the youth level. Our, our town across all of our youth programs does a tremendous job doing that, and we're producing amazing people that are now out, out in the world. And I'm tying this back to the fields, because the more opportunities we have, and I'm, I'm passionate about this, of getting kids moving and off the screens and, and a place, a safe place for them to go and be kids. That's what we're talking about. And, and we're not talking about stadium lights. I, I, that is a false narrative. We're talking about lighting some fields to increase practice time, to increase the quality of life for the youth of Summit. That's what we're talking about. It's that simple. The narratives have gone sideways. So I urge you to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Lori Ruffolo, 51 Way Drive. I remember Mr., Councilman Smallwood, when we had our meetings, I do feel, I do want to say that I am against the lighting, and I would like to see all the children have all the practice time they want, but I do want to see the rest of Summit using their fields and using different areas and sharing the burden. I do feel it'll change the quality of life. I am a good three blocks away from Tatlock, and still I have, I experience the different issues that everyone else is, but just to a lesser degree. And I know it'll impact the quality of life in the neighborhood, and it'll do it permanently. And I just urge you to find other ways to have all of the needs of sports met in Summit. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments from the public? All right, comments from council? Councilwoman Toth?
Well, thank you, Council President. I am going to vote in favor of this resolution, because I believe in public fundraising for projects that are wants rather than needs. I echo residents' concerns that the, the whole lower Tatlock Field project remains uncertain, the Neighborhood Committee hasn't completed its work, and we have no idea if this project will really come to fruition. And at the same time, DCP has two underfunded playgrounds in the works. So we appreciate that residents want to contribute to, to support the DCP projects, and I would urge people also to, to contribute to the two playgrounds that we really want to get off the ground this year, and that, that have already been approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Boyer?
Thank you, Council President. My, my, my comment about housing prices wasn't about how the lights will affect your existing housing price. The comment that was made up here was, "You're targeting the less fortunate." Stop. Not less fortunate. That, I, I, you know, I don't like it when, it's disingenuous when people say things like that, when they're not less fortunate. Because I, there are people in this town that are struggling, that don't have homes, that are renters, right? And to come up here and say, "You're targeting the less fortunate, because this may affect your, your housing prices, your million-dollar house," that's disingenuous. The other thing is, and I respect this man tremendously, but to come up here and say, you know, "This is not political," and then you say, "Here's what the three Republican candidates say about the lights." The Together for Summit team. But this is not political. 100% is political. I mean, he's talking about the Republicans. You know, he didn't even ask us how he felt about it. I never even said how I felt about the lights. You start talking about the three Republican candidates, and then you say, "Here's a, you know, I would like to tell all the Summit voters, you know, that the Republicans are bad people, for they want the lights." You know, come on. I mean, just, you know, some things that folks come up here and say are just like, you know, I, I get it, you know, but the, the last thing I'll say is, I coached football for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. In the wintertime, the sun goes down at like 5:00, 5:30, something like that. At the top, the, the top field, you have sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, right? You all have to squish down to about 20 or 30 yards and have practice from 5:30 to about 8:00 at night. That's ridiculous. You can't even see the football in the air. And these kids and their parents devote so much time to this. And let's not downplay the importance of sports. Like, don't, you, you can't downplay that. Sports, football, basketball, save kids' lives, man. They save kids' lives, my life, you know? They're important. Sports are important in Summit. And when, did, did Tatlock Field just, I'm not even talking about the lights, but did it just pop up like yesterday? I mean, I, I'm 47, right? It's been there at least that long. I mean, you moved there, right? Like, I, am I confused or something like that? It's always been there. Every Saturday morning, used to happen, the marching band would march from the high school to Tatlock Field, every Saturday morning. Everyone in the town knew it was a football game. People loved it. They would come outside on their porches, in a nice ball air, clap and everything, and then everyone would walk to the football game. Man, this is hilltopper, this is like hilltopper stuff, man. So, I, I mean, tradition is something else, you know? Thank you, Council President. I just had to rant for two seconds.
Thank you, Councilman Boyer. Other comments? Councilwoman Combsel.
Thank you, Council President. I had a few questions and a few comments, and some different things. Somebody mentioned the narrative going sideways, and, I mean, I have to point out that Summit DCP was a part of this narrative about having football games, and they sent an email out to the community, you know, "Picture the magic of senior night for our young Summit athletes. The field illuminated under the glow of state-of-the-art field lights. Crowd alive with energy and the thrill of competition filling the air." So, I mean, you know, they have certainly contributed to this idea that these lights are coming for a Friday night light game. I had some few, a few questions for Councilman Smallwood. Do you know how much money we have committed to this already? Because it sounds like you're buying this as a big package right now. You said it's cheaper if we get it all at the same time, and we have a group of residents who are committed to funding the rest. So how much money do you think we have right now, committed?
$650,000.
You have $650,000?
It's in the city budget.
No, I mean, I'm sorry, I mean from donors.
I have no idea.
Okay.
This is not to purchase the lights itself. I'm, I'm just stating that if we were able to purchase lights for both fields at the same time, there is a cost savings to it.
Yes, but the, in, in the ordinance, we have $650,000 for the upper lights. So you were saying, so, so essentially, you're saying we would wait and not do the upper lights, and just wait and fundraise for the entire project? Or you would move ahead with the $650,000 for the upper lights, if you don't have the money for the lower lights?
Well, that's going to be determined by the Department of Community Programs. We would, if there were a donation made to the city to cover the cost of the lower, lower Investors Field, and I believe that's really what this resolution is about, is if we were, you know, Department of Community Programs and, has been approached, saying, "Hey, listen, if we've, we've, we're able to raise the money to purchase for the lower lights, would you accept it?" And I believe that this is really what the intent of this resolution is, is to say we would support that.
Okay, I have a few more comments. One, if this is really about, just about practice time, it would seem that, being that a lot of people who support the lights still understand that there are issues associated with the lights going into this neighborhood, if this was truly about practice time, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me why you wouldn't just put the upper lights in, see if that worked, see if you could address your field needs there. And rather, everyone, you know, now we're talking about doing the whole thing. So I do have a prepared statement. I will send this to you, Rosie.
Do, do you mind if I just address that comment that you just made?
Address it.
All right, no, go ahead. I'll, I'll, no, I'll go back. Finish your prepared statement.
Okay. Council approves $650,000 to fund the upper lights in the 2025 capital budget. The community was told this is just the upper lights. Lower lights are in the 2026 budget. Essentially, don't worry, go home. Now, in the middle of summer, when most of the town is on vacation, we have a resolution to support lighting the lower field. The language in this resolution is vague and would allow for combining the $650,000 marked for the upper lights to be combined with money raised to change course and instead light the lower field. In order to be transparent with the community and make council's intention of this resolution clear, I'm going to make a motion to amend the language in this resolution as follows. And I have. Okay. Whereas, in the 2025 capital budget, Common Council approves $650,000 in the capital budget plan to support the installation of lighting at Upper Tatlock Field. And whereas, Common Council and the Department of Community Programs have received a substantial amount of project support and inquiries regarding fundraising efforts to support the installation of lighting at Lower Tatlock Field. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Summit. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the City of Summit that the common council will support donations for the lower Tatlock Field lighting project."
I second the motion.
So we have a motion to amend the resolution? Is that what that was?
Yes, sorry, I want to make... Yes, I had previously requested for language to be updated, and I did not get... I'm not sure why it wasn't updated, if this is truly the intention. So, yes, so I'm making a motion to amend the language in this resolution.
Okay. We have a second.
Please do.
All right. So I guess we can speak on the amended resolution? Do we have... I guess we can... We're going to open it up to comments from the public again, because it's an amended resolution.
Sorry, can you explain... I understand the amendment, but it here was changed.
So I'll read it.
What's changed?
So the original... The original resol... Actually, Rosie, do you want to read it, what the original resolution was?
Sure, I'll just pull it up here. All right, thank you. "Be it resolved by the common council of the City of Summit that the Tatlock Field lighting project, which includes the electrical concept plan and both the lighting and installation of the upper Tatlock Field and the investors' lower field, is hereby supported at a fund... city funding level of $650,000."
Right, so that's the first resolution. And Councilwoman Cammelson just read the second... What she would like to discuss as an amended resolution. So that's on the floor right now.
Can you read the second one? I don't know what it says.
Do you want to read the second one?
Sure. "Whereas, in 2025... In the 2025 capital budget, the common council approved $650,000 in the capital budget plan to support the installation of lighting at upper Tatlock Field. And whereas, common council and the Department of Community Programs have received a substantial amount of project support and inquiries regarding fundraising efforts to support the installation of lighting at lower Tatlock Field. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the City of Summit that the common council will support donations for the lower Tatlock Field lighting project."
Council President.
Where... Do you have clarifications on the resolution or comments on it, as I'm going to have the public?
Yeah, I mean, before public comments, can we talk about... Because I don't understand this. Like, I don't... I don't get like, what... Are we...
Well, you're going to have an opportunity to ask questions during council comments. So, yeah. So, does anyone from the public like to make a comment on the moved revised resolution? Thank you.
Though I'm still opposed to lighting both fields, I would support this amendment. And the reason I would support it is, it is clear and honest and direct, and it explains exactly what the funding is for and what it's not for. Now, there's been talk about, "Oh, we're only going to have one game a week," or when... I'm... I've lived here for 52 years. You've been here seven... Forty-seven years old. I remember when I moved here, there were seven football games because there was a grass field, and the coach would not allow anybody else to use it otherwise. There were the Summit relays, and then there was graduation. Now, we have far more usage of the fields. Things change, I understand. I'm a supporter. I love to go to the football games. And I used to love it when the band marched in and out. It made me feel great. But there's mission creep in the military, and there's also usage creep when it comes to lighted fields. And though you may intend only one night a week, well, the football team wants to play at night, the flag football team wants to play at night, the soccer team wants to play at night, the lacrosse team wants to play at night, and whatever else teams want to play at night. And pretty soon, you've got Friday, Saturday, and Sunday nights, or maybe you have Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights, and you're constantly got games and traffic and noise and deterioration of the quality of life so that people can't even go out on a summer evening and enjoy their backyard. So those are my comments.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments from the public on this revised resolution?
I still, without being able to read it, I still don't fully understand what's changed in it. I mean, I think the intent here, from what I understood from just the initial reading, is that basically if there is donations to further enhance the project, you'll accept them to complete the project, kind of in my own layman's terms. I don't know if the new language... How the new language changes that. And then just in regard to Mr. Bassman's comments again, I'm not suggesting from my earlier comments that there won't ever be night games, or there's just, we're going to agree to one night game. What I'm very confident in is that the ratio of practices to games is pretty consistent. So in order to have all those night games, you're going to have to stop allowing practices. And there's only, you know, one game a week for a lot of these sports. And in fact, the only... Varsity football is, you know, drawing a huge crowd. Seventh-grade lacrosse is not drawing a huge crowd, unfortunately. So there may be some night games for youth sports in the, you know, in the middle school grades, but again, that's not going to cause traffic problems for the community. So those are my only thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments from the public?
House, Ellen, 269, Ashland. I... It's not a... I don't completely understand the difference between the resolutions. I think... So maybe some clarity on specifically what the amendment is going to do. You know, just to kind of echo what PJ said a little bit, you know, and Councilwoman Toth said, you know, you do have tremendous support from the community, you know, raising money to fund essentially the equal number that's been budgeted. That's a significant commitment from the community to Summit, to the town of Summit. So I guess my question is, is the council voting to accept that money? And if they do accept that money, to use that money to light both fields? Because I'm very unclear on what the amendment means. I thought the original resolution was to accept the money if it were raised. And what Councilman Smallwood said is, there's some economies of scale by doing this... By doing both fields at the same time. So that's a question I have. And, you know, I... Again, I'm going to double down on my... This false narrative about stadium lights and, you know, we've got, you know, I think half the teams that were referenced play in the fall, and the other half play in the spring. And like PJ said, will there be night games? Yes, but I... And trust me and hold me to this, we live in Summit too, and we live with all of you. And I'm a very thoughtful person when we do this. And, you know, so we're... We're here to, in my opinion, do the right thing. We've got skin in the game with youth, and that's why we're passionate about this. But we're part of the community. We share this town with all of you, and I mean this from the bottom of my heart. We're not here to decrease anyone's quality of life. In fact, it's the opposite. So that's all I'd say.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments from the public? All right. Oh, yeah, please.
Lisa Allen, 27, Plain Street. Thank you, Council President. Through you, quick question. We need some clarity. But also, Councilwoman Cammelson, you said something earlier. You asked Councilman Smallwood if the funding was tied to... Like, if you would have to wait to get the full funding for both fields? And if that's what this resolution was addressing? So... Because you said, "Does that mean if we get the funding, we have to wait to do the upper field in order to do the lower field?" That's how I understood it. So I just want clarity on if your changes are stating that in order to do the upper Tatlock Field, that you would have to wait to gather the funding in order to do the entire project? I just want to make sure that's clear. Does that make sense? Did I... Yeah. So I just want to make sure that, is this resolution, the change in the resolution going to force you to wait on doing anything on the project until you raise the full funds? It just needs to be clear, if that makes sense? Okay, I just... Thank you.
Thank you for your comment and question. Any other comments or questions from the public?
Yeah, I won't take up too much time, but I just want to say, I don't expect anyone to care, but this is exactly why I like going to these meetings. Everything that just happened here, exactly. See the former council president come up and, you know, play these political games and stuff, you know? I don't like the left and right politics. I like right and wrong. But yeah, this is more entertaining than these crappy TV shows out there.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments from the public? All right, comments from council or questions?
Could I take a stab at this?
You can start, Councilman Boyer.
So is it... Are we saying that if we get private funding, then this is saying that we use that funding for the upper Tatlock Field? Is that... Is that...
Lower.
For the lower?
Yeah.
Upper's already funded.
Yeah, I know. The upper is funded, so...
Council President, can I... I'm sorry, can I try to clarify?
Yeah, yeah, that would be great.
Because they were... Because I... Yeah, so I'm not sure if this... I tried to address this in my statement. I'm not sure if it's clear.
Thank you.
The language in the original ordinance was very vague, and it just said, "$650,000 has been marked for lighting Tatlock Field." And essentially, somebody could... The council could decide to take that money that has always been discussed for the upper lights and just say, "You know what? Now we have $200,000 in donations. Let's not do the upper lights. Let's just do the lower lights." So I've been told that that's not... That that's not what's happening. So if that's not what's happening, I think that it would be helpful for the community to just understand this resolution does support donations, and it's saying that those donations are going to go to the lower field. And that we've committed $650,000 to the upper field. That's what that's for. And any donations we receive will be for the lower field. And the questions I had for Councilman Smallwood were, they were based off of his introduction where he said that we were getting a discount. This was the first I had heard of it, and he said we were going to get a discount if we got it all at one time. So then I was trying to understand, does this mean we're doing it all at one time? Or, you know... But this, I wrote this before I heard that. So this is just trying to define what that $650,000 is for. Does that help? Okay.
So...
Councilman Boyer.
So if we got a $2 million donation, right, that could fund both hypothetically, upper and lower, we wouldn't be able to fund the upper if we passed this? We wouldn't be able to fund the whole project. We got $2 million. Hey, here's $2 million. Put in lights, both upper and lower. If we were to do this resolution, we wouldn't be able to set donations for... To fund the upper as well. I'm just hypothetically, I'm just...
Council President.
Yes, Councilman.
I think we can always... Just because we have it marked doesn't mean that it has to go to that.
Oh, okay.
Right? Tammy, like, I apologize. We have it marked, but if we didn't spend it, we don't have to spend it. My... Is that...
City Administrator Baldwin, please.
Through you, Council President. I think this is getting a little bit confusing for everybody. Perhaps Mr. Giacobi could help us out here. I'm not a resolution writer. I don't see much of a difference in the two resolutions, but if you read this and you say that we approve $650,000 to support upper Tatlock, which is what the ordinance reads also, that's fine, but you're saying that support donations only for the lower Tatlock Field. What if the upper Tatlock portion comes in at 675, prices change? I don't know, Mr. Giacobi, if that... If this resolution would hold us to that in terms of the donations. It's a little confusing for me.
I think what I would do is, if you're going to do this, I would change it a bit. I think you want to, A, in the whereas, after the first whereas, this is approved 650 in the capital budget, tonight you approve the bond ordinance to fund 650 towards the upper Tatlock. Then where it says that the common council will support donations, I would say primarily for the lower Tatlock Field lighting project, and any excess funds can be used towards the upper thing. Because if you got... If you get excess funds, as Councilman Boyer said, let's say you get $1.5 million of donations, you don't have to... You can take that bonded money and put it aside for another capital project. So I don't know if I would... I think you've already primarily... And I think if you recognize in the whereas clause, you've already raised 650 by bonds, you could say the donations will primarily support the lower Tatlock Field lighting project, but any excess funds raised can be used towards the upper.
Councilman Pulowski.
So the whereas clauses are really meaningless, right? I mean, they provide a little color to what we're trying to do, but they're not a part of any resolution. We're not resolving to do anything there, right?
Correct, that's right.
So the only thing that we're resolving to do here is to support, and I don't even know what that means, donations for the lower Tatlock Field lighting project.
Support can be changed to...
Yeah. I mean, when did you write this? It would have been awesome if you circulated it before the meeting, but...
I asked for languages to be changed on this, and nobody, you know...
Well, no, I appreciate that you wrote a new version of it, but if you had sent it off during the day, you know, we could have looked at it a little more carefully. If your concern is to make sure that the city doesn't fund lighting lower Tatlock, is that what your concern is?
No, my concern is that the city will change course, as has often happened, and say, "We're going to put this 650 that was earmarked for the upper lights, we're just going to go ahead and stick it at the other field."
I think that's what I just said, but...
Well, no, but I...
Because this really doesn't amend...
But you really can't take the 650 that you raised in a bond, because your bond is very specific. And it says, right, if you look at the bond, you just passed bond ordinance, it says upper Tatlock Fields. So that's the purpose of the bond, is upper Tatlock Fields that you passed earlier this evening. So you can't just take and say, "Ah, bait and switch, we're going to put in lower and not do the upper." You have funded upper Tatlock. I think what I would suggest you guys do is take the original... The resolution you have right here, not this one, take your original one, that the Tatlock Field, which includes the installation of the investor field, is hereby supported at a city funding level of $650,000 as approved by bond ordinance, and the city will accept donations for the... Both the lower and upper Tatlock Field projects.
Council President, you good with that?
Hold on a second. What... Is that a... Are you asking Councilwoman Cammelson if she's all right with that?
Yeah.
It doesn't... I don't know that that changes... Well, okay, so if the $650,000, if we say per bond ordinance, and that is the bond ordinance, then, then yes.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Toth.
I'm sorry, but the original ordinance as drafted refers to both upper Tatlock and lower Tatlock within that $650,000. And it... And the $650,000 specifically does not go towards lower Tatlock.
I was just looking at the bond...
Yeah, I'm looking at the resolution as drafted, page 124 of 226 of the council packet.
124.
It says that the Tatlock Field lighting project, which includes the electric concept plan and both the lighting and installation of the upper Tatlock Field and the... plant and both the lighting and installation of the upper tatlock field and the investors' lower field.
You don't get the bond ordinance to not.
No, I'm looking at the resolution we're discussing right now, the original resolution.
Yeah, I, I was.
But that, that refers to lower as well as upper.
No, I understand that, that's why I said, but when I was referring to, Councilwoman Toth, it's the bond ordinance that was.
Right, right, and that I'm aware.
This is the improvement of miscellaneous facilities and grants in by the city, including the upper tatlock field.
Right.
So it says it with the new lighting.
Right, so the resolution should be consistent with the bond ordinance.
Yeah, that's what.
And, and the resolution as originally proposed is not.
So what I had said is, you can take the original resolution and say that the tatlock field lighting project, which includes the electric concept of both the lighting installation of the upper tatlock field, because, and the investors' lower field, installation of upper tatlock field is hereby supported at a funding level of 650 as approved by bond, and then I would add, and the city will accept donations for the installation, lighting and installation at investors' lower field and excess funds for the upper tatlock field project.
But the investors' lower field is not being supported by the, by the 650. Okay, you just read it again.
Hold on a sec.
Let me read it.
Just write it for a second. Are there any comments while, Councilman Palowski?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with Matt's change, but, I mean, at the end of the day, there is no $650,000 for lower tatlock field, because we didn't bond for it. There's not even $1 for lower tatlock field because we didn't bond for it. So if we want to clarify things, you know, I'm cool with that, but I don't know that it's necessary, but, you know, I'm good with it the way that Matt said it. It's just, I, I'm not sure why there's confusion.
Have you gathered your thoughts, Matt?
I'm, I'm reading it.
Counsel President, may I, may I use the restroom?
Well, let's just finish this, and then we're going to take a five-minute break, okay?
Counsel President?
Yes, Ms. Baldwin.
I'm sorry, through you. So we do, if we get a donation, we do a resolution accepting donations.
Yeah, we have to have a resolution for it.
So I don't think the language in here should say we're accepting a donation.
Right, because we don't even know what it is. We would be supporting.
Right, if somebody wants to donate money to this endeavor.
We'll take any money anyone wants to give us for anything.
I, I would say I would echo the comments, this is why we shouldn't have resolutions on the fly. You pass them out beforehand. But I'm, maybe we can get to a better place. Matt, have you come up with something?
Yeah, I'm going to read so fast.
Jeopardy music? So while Matt is doing this, I do have a question. Are we, we are now, we now need to vote on the amendment, right? And then, the amended resolution that Councilwoman Kalmelson, Councilwoman Kalmelson proposed.
Well, let's get an alternative version. We can vote on Councilwoman Kalmelson's version. We decide we like this. If everyone agrees, kind of like Matt's, we'll vote that one down, because we have, that's been tabled, that's on the, I'm sorry, that's. That has been put forward, so we have to put a vote on that. And then we can have a, then we would need a motion to discuss this amended resolution.
Can I, can I read it?
Yeah.
Yes.
That the tatlock field lighting project, comma, which includes the electrical concept plant, comma, and the lighting and installation of the upper tatlock field is hereby supported at a city funding level of $650,000 as approved by bond ordinance 25-3349, and the city supports donations for the lighting and installation of the investors' lower field, and any excess donations can be utilized towards the upper tatlock field lighting and installation. So if you get more than 650 raised, you can then reduce what you're using on the bond for the upper. So the upper is funded, and the money you get will go to the lower. And if you get more than, I'm assuming that 650 and 650 is 1.3 million, and that covers the whole project?
No.
No, it's more than that, but it's okay.
Okay, but whatever you get excess, if there's excess funds, and you can do the lower, you guys then, the council, they take the excess donations and put it towards the upper.
All right.
I want to preclude you from using it if you get, somebody gives it to you, but this way, it's, it's consistent with the bond ordinance that the, the, it's consistent with the bond ordinance and your, and your capital budget, which is the 650 is earmarked for upper. Donations that come in would go to lower, and then if there's excess, you finish lower, you can then use whatever excess towards the upper.
So Councilwoman Kalmelson, would that alleviate your concerns with the original?
Yes, Counsel President, thank you.
Counsel. I don't like it, because, I mean, I don't think anything should be changed up to lower field. I think it should still say, and both the lighting and installation of the upper tatlock and investors' lower field. I don't think that that needs to come out to clarify where the money's going, where the 650 is going. We can do that without modifying the opening clause of the.
The bond ordinance you just passed, 25-3349, is very specific. It's funding for the upper field. It's not, it'll stay in the lower field. And so when you pass bond ordinances, you have to, you have to allocate those funds.
I, I understand all that, but this resolution is to approve the tatlock field lighting project, which includes both.
No, this isn't, this resolution has nothing to do with approving the tatlock field lighting project. This resolution is indicating that you guys have already, the council, the common council has already funded 650 towards upper. All this resolution is saying is that we support donations from whatever source to help do an entire project, which would, which would be the lower. And excess funds could be used for the upper if there's excess funds. And if there's not enough funds, you're going to go with the, you've already approved the upper, so.
Do we have to limit?
Counsel President.
What?
Councilwoman Boyer.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the professional, our city administrator, is, as written, is this not consistent with the bond? The original ordinance, not all this other stuff that was.
The original resolution.
The original resolution, yes. As written, is it not consistent with the bond?
It's consistent, $650,000.
Is there anything wrong with the, the resolution as written that conflicts with the bond?
Sorry, through you, Counsel President, not to my knowledge. I.
And Mr. Giacobi, was there anything wrong with the original one in your estimation around the bond?
It just, I mean, I think hereby supports a city funding level of 650. You could, you could add in, if you want to keep it, as approved by bond ordinance 25-3349. That is very consistent, because that specifically tells you what you're using it for.
Would that, first off, would that change, Councilman Palowski, be?
I'm okay with that.
All right. Would that change, Councilwoman Kalmelson, be?
Yeah, per bond ordinance, yes.
Perfect, okay. Councilwoman Toth?
If we're not talking about accepting donations, then I don't know why we have this ordinance at all. All it's saying is we passed a bond ordinance. Or why, that's what, what does this resolution do other than say, we passed a bond ordinance?
I think it says that. It's, it's, because it's saying that there, it includes an electrical concept plant and both the lighting and installation of the upper tatlock field and the investor lower tatlock field is hereby supported at a city funding level of $650,000.
Except that's not what the bond ordinance says.
The bond ordinance only supports the upper.
Upper, right. So I don't understand what this resolution does as.
Counsel President, may I just ask a question, maybe a rhetorical? Perhaps the resolution is advising any organization who, who might be collecting donations on the city's behalf? Is that, is that a possibility here? That they need to know that the city supports donations being made?
Can I just, can I just make a, a very simple?
Please, I love simplicity right now.
If people want to leave in, and the investors' lower field, I don't think that matters, is hereby supported at a city funding level of $650,000 as approved by bond ordinance 25-3349. Then I just add in, and the city supports donations for the lighting and installation project, period. So you're supporting 650, you raised 650, and they'll take donations for the lighting and installation project.
And you'd leave the language in the installation of the upper tatlock field and investors' lower field? That would stay in there.
You can keep that in there, because, because we're referencing bond ordinance 25-3349, which is very specific. That says upper. So once you're raising money in a bond ordinance, that's where you have to utilize it.
Council, Councilman Palowski.
So, so, you know, what I said before about the whereas clauses, you know, they're not a part of the resolution, but they do provide color. And I think as I look at these side by side, we could move the whereas clauses to the beginning, now therefore be it resolved, paragraph that's here with the addition of, under bond ordinance, whatever the number was, be it further resolved that the common council will accept donations for the lower tatlock field lighting project and call it a day. Then everything's in there.
So you're taking, which, which, which resolution are you looking at?
Well, you take, you take the, the two whereas clauses from Michelle's.
Okay.
Slap them at the top of our original ordinance.
Right.
You're adding, as approved by bond ordinance, whatever, to our first paragraph, then we're saying be it further resolved that the common council will accept donations for the lower tatlock field lighting project.
That the common council supports donations for the investors' lower field lighting and installation.
I don't know what, I don't know what support means, but I would, I would change it to accept.
But we'd have, but we have to have a separate resolution to accept donations.
Okay, so we'll support.
Except that, I'm, I'm sorry, speaking out of turn.
Now we got three attorneys.
But then Mr. Giacobi had finessed it for.
I'm going to, can I have an extra copy of the?
Yeah.
Anybody have a pair of scissors?
Had finessed it so that if there were excess donations, they could roll back to upper, so.
That's what I, that's what I.
At a city funding level not to exceed $650,000 for.
Counsel President.
Councilwoman Boyer.
To, to be perfectly honest, if we have three attorneys up here talking, this will never end. It'll never end. It'll never, you should, you should hear yourselves, like, whereas, and as is, and it, what, what is it? What are we trying to do? We want to collect donations so that, you know, if we need to, we could pay for the lower field, right? I mean, plain English, what is it?
Now, be it resolved, now therefore to do what Jamel just said.
All right. How about, how about this? Matt, why don't you work on that suggestion while we take a five-minute recess to use the restroom, okay?
I agree.
All right, so, we are.
Might be best I use that.
Yes.
All right, so, we are... All right, so, okay, so I'm gonna make a, I'm gonna make a motion to, to...
Amend?
Amend Councilwoman Conmelson's...
Amended resolution.
Amended resolution.
Second.
Second, okay. And so, Madam Clerk, could you read the Councilwoman Conmelson's newly amended resolution?
Whereas, in 2025, in the 2025 capital budget, common council approves $650,000 in the capital budget plan to support the installation of lighting at upper tatlock field. And whereas, common council and the Department of Community Programs have received a substantial amount of project support and inquiries regarding fundraising efforts to support the installation of lighting at lower tatlock field. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the City of Summit that the tatlock field lighting project, which includes the electrical concept plan and both the lighting and installation of the upper tatlock field and the investors' lower field, is hereby supported at a city funding level of $650,000 as approved by bond ordinance number 25-3349. And be it further resolved that the common council supports donations for the lighting and installation of the investors' lower field, and any excess donations can be utilized toward the upper tatlock field lighting and installation.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
All right, comments from the, from the public? Gotta do it. Comments from, from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion carries.
Need change.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any comments from the public on the consent agenda? Comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passes. All right, now we're at public comment section of our meeting. If there is anyone from the public who would like to make a comment at this time, please feel free.
We're just gonna keep the entertainment rolling, okay? Public record, the name is Bongholio. So, before I play a song here, I do want to know, are you gonna bully Councilman Boyer for voting no? The same way you bullied Michelle for voting no? Is that gonna happen? Because the last meeting, even though I did read in Summit, tap into Summit, it did say there would be a meeting on July 16th, but I guess there wasn't. So, didn't happen. But due to the fact that Councilwoman Michelle was voted by the people, I thought those were a very, a very distasteful way to go about a difference of opinion, a difference of like voting, you know? You were appointed and, well, I won't address it. Not really sure, whatever. But I wrote a song about the fact that you bullied Michelle, and I'm gonna play it for you guys. So I've gone to meetings for a long time. I've known for, I've known for bringing props to meetings, and I'm also known for singing songs, so... Took down Edison. Took down LaValle. I'm gonna take down the town of Summit. Make turning well regret. Should've just kept his mouth shut, reacting while so upset. Bullying Michelle was certainly a moment, not his best. Oh Mike, you silly council boy, do you wanna throw down a bet? I bet, I bet, I bet that you'll regret. I bet, I bet, I bet you'll never forget. I bet, I bet you wish we never met. Got dedicated email.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, other comments from the public?
Hard act to follow. Adriana Elarcon, Springfield Avenue. Good evening. July 14th storm had me once again clinging to hope that I would not suffer more property damage. I deeply appreciate the council members who reached out to check on me both during and afterwards. It truly meant a lot. Once again, Salt Brook transformed into a rapid, dangerous river. The volume of water that shot out of the broken county pipe was beyond what most could imagine. During the storm, I watched trees slide down Sunset Drive with watching more in my backyard crumble into the rapid water. While I know stabilization plans are underway, I'm here tonight to urge you to keep Salt Brook issue top of mind. We are now in the thick of heavy rain and hurricane season. Every time a storm hits, I brace myself, hoping that this wouldn't be the one that causes even more irreparable damage to the area and the other areas, both up and downstream. So I'm begging this council to formally reach out again to the Army Corps of Engineers for assistance. I know there has been contact in the past, but the current state of this area is already a disaster. Without urgent intervention, it's gonna get much worse. I'm glad to see Governor Murphy touring Berkeley Heights and Congressman Keen Jr. in New Providence, but Summit should have been on the radar too. The video of Salt Brook after, during the storms showed the true scope of the crisis, and they deserve state and federal attention just as much, and perhaps they can motivate the Army Corps assistance. In addition, it goes without saying, this part of Springfield Avenue cannot simply handle any more development. I urge the council and relevant boards to take a closer look at how recent construction had worsened, has worsened the runoff problems. For example, the two new homes at 709 Springfield Avenue, which I shared videos, caused massive water runoff, turning the sidewalk now into a stream. The overdevelopment in this area is absolutely exaggerating the damage in the area on the broken county pipe. Regarding 695 Springfield Avenue, the proposed Beacon Church site, as stated in the zoning meeting, includes requests for excess lot coverage, 8.7% over the allowed maximum. Where is all this water to go?
As the mayor spills water.
This is the problem. Runoff, water runoff. So, yeah, the water has nowhere to go, and all the water is just gonna go into Salt Brook. We cannot ignore the potential catastrophic results, not just in my area, but further downstream, which cannot and will not be known until it's too late. Regarding the long-neglected damaged county pipe and the added deconstruction it creates, I know the town continues to meet about this issue. I'm grateful, it remains top priority, but words and meetings alone are not enough. We need action before it's too late. Thank you for your time and continuing to listen. I hope this council will take the next steps to lead with further action. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments from the public?
Thank you, Council President Lisa Allen, 27 Plain Street. I just want to come up here and say thank you for your service. I've known you for a very long time, probably almost 20 years, maybe at this point. And you, your reputation precedes you in a very good way. Because even though you weren't elected for this particular position, the reason why so many people were excited to have you on both sides of the aisle and welcome you with open arms is because of the fact that you had been elected twice in the past and have always been a statesman to this community. And all of the volunteer opportunities that you have filled in this community, whether it's coaching, whether it's boy scouts, whether it's council, the list goes on. People who live in this town, business owners, and people who spend a good amount of their time, that care about this community, appreciate you. And when I came up and asked a respectful question, I felt as though there's a lot of talk about the First Amendment right in this room, and to be chastised in this room to ask an honest question, I just wanted to have a debate because everybody was confused. I just want you to keep it in perspective, that we all really appreciate how you are trying to be inclusive with this group, and understanding that sometimes we all disagree on the dais, and that's just part of the process, because this is the only time you can have this big meeting. So I just wanted to say thank you, because I've known you a long time, and I really hope that everybody watching at home can understand that it's just a show here. So, thank you for keeping our town safe, thank you for focusing on civility, and thank you for focusing on our town.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments from the public? Okay, no other comments from the public? Let's move on to council member comments and new business. Anyone at 11:05? Yes, Councilman Pulaski.
Apologies, everyone. Just a few comments, and I want to give a Tatlock Neighborhood Committee report. First, City of Summit. We were a township until 1899, and we've been a city ever since. Salt Brook, overdevelopment, it's the cause, less permeable ground, more water going into gutters, going into our sewer systems, and they have to exit somewhere. And we're gonna keep... We're gonna keep working on trying to do this. And I think, Tammy, we say the fall, we'll be able to go out to bid for that? Okay, hopefully September. Yep, Mike was elected twice and was a very popular appointment when Councilwoman Allen moved across town. Tatlock Lights, most of the people are gone, but one of the comments that I've been hearing made a lot is that acknowledging all of the meetings that Councilman Smallwood had and the Department of Community Programs, but everything's fallen on deaf ears, you never listened to us. And I, that's just not true. We've absolutely listened to the Tatlock community, and we've also listened to the city at large. That we ultimately voted for this project tonight does not mean that we didn't listen. It just means that we had a really tough decision to make. And it's unfortunate that it will make some people unhappy, but most of our decisions make some people unhappy. And it's just a tough, a tough place where we find ourselves, but we're doing the best that we can. Second, the Tatlock Neighborhood Committee. I was very disappointed when our chair resigned the week before last. We actually have been getting a lot done, and before she resigned, she had sent around a, you know, some of the issues that we've been looking at and some of the tasks that were at hand. Now, on the 10th of June, there was a playoff lacrosse game, and not everything that we wanted to do was done. I don't think that's a failure of the committee, and I don't think it's a failure of the city. We've used it as a chance to improve. And I know we've invited the athletic director to come to one of our meetings. I've been engaged with her as well, and we are putting measures in place, or we've put measures in place where there's gonna be direct communication with the athletic department at the high school and our police to make sure that all the appropriate no parking signs get up. Another issue that we've had is, you know, what are the dates that we need to look at for Tatlock? The football schedule just came out. I think that's been forwarded to the police, but if not, it will be soon. We'll pencil in those home games and keep better track of the playoff games when they happen. Bus parking is an issue. I am coordinating with the AD on putting together written instructions that can go to the various bus drivers when it happens. Another thing that we've talked about in the committee, and this will probably come to council in September, if it makes it through caps, once we refer it there, is the idea of kind of modifying the curb over on the visitor parking side of Tatlock Field. Tatlock Field has a home side and a visitor's side. Now, that's for football. And there's a visitor entrance, and that's where the buses have since 1960 parked when they load and unload the players. When Butler Parkway was narrowed, having the buses there did cause a little bit of a traffic issue. We have tried to remedy that by moving the buses away once they have unloaded their players and then come back. But of course, cars park there in the meantime. A potential solution that we're looking into are permeable pavers where for like, I don't know, a two or three bus-length stretch at that part of Butler Parkway, they would be able to move a few feet off of the street so that, right now, they come over the painted shoulder. And then they wouldn't have to move, and it would maybe help some of the traffic issues that we have over there. Enforcement of parking restrictions and effective ways to enforce. I know Michelle's been working with Chief Peters on that. Trash has been an issue. The DC, the Department of Community Services, DCS, picks it up only a couple times a week, so we are looking into how we can maybe maximize the pickups by changing the days and also having our sports team that sometimes have team dinners down there either remove their own trash or make it known to the Department of Community Services that it needs to come out. So we're working on that. The Aubrey Street entrance gate was damaged a couple weeks ago, or maybe a month ago, and we got that fixed in fairly short order. It's now locked. We're looking into, a lot of people kind of abuse the paved area, the lane that goes through from Aubrey to the Tatlock Field House parking lot. We are gonna put up signs that say authorized vehicles only. And, you know, we've put up rocks next to the gates so people can't drive around them, but they still do. So we're gonna put those signs up. The gate at the parking lot at Tatlock currently is not locked, but that's because they're doing work on the lacrosse wall, and as soon as they're done with that, we're gonna start locking that up again. What else? Visibility issues. There's some overgrown stuff at the corner of Aubrey and Lewis. Property management is asking the owner if they could trim it back a little bit so that we can have better visibility. I also spoke to Director Schreger about, you know, what we can do to force residents to cut stuff back when it's a safety hazard on the street. And he said, what we need is something called a site triangle ordinance, which we do not have. And from what I hear, this is something that has been, you know, bounced around council for decades, and we'll probably be revisiting it again. The porta-potties, we were asked to move those. We did not move them. We think that they're in the best spot right now. I've been talking to folks at Department of Community Programs about it, but I know Councilman Smallwood has been monitoring them for stench, and everything seems to have been okay so far.
It only stinks when you open the door and go inside.
Okay, so. The lacrosse wall is going to have a gazebo. One of the issues that we talked about are, are there gonna be lights on it? How bright are the lights gonna be? When are they going to be on? And we are, they're gonna be on a switch, and, which I am told, and we will be able to put a timer on them. So I'm sure we'll talk in the committee about what the appropriate time ought to be. We'll make that recommendation to DCP, and I'm sure that they'll take the advice. Some question as to what the park hours were at Tatlock. And I was told that it's nine to nine. There may be a discrepancy on the DCP website, but I'm told that they're going to fix that. And then Tatlock Playground, it came in, all the bids came in a little high. So as some folks mentioned earlier tonight, we are gonna be looking to raise some funds. I think we've raised $13,000 so far, but we need to get like another $150,000. So that's what's going on in the Tatlock Neighborhood Committee.
Thank you, other comments?
Council President, I'll be really brief.
Councilman Boyer.
But that was a really detailed summation. That was, wow, that was. So really quickly, Mark Lickington came down to the Summit Housing Authority and to talk about funding with them. The first thing he said was, thank goodness the council passed and put them in the fair share housing program because if they weren't in it, then that's a non-conversation starter. There is no opportunity for them for funding. So I want to thank this council for putting the Summit Housing Authority in our fair share plan, even though one member came up here and was, you know, livid about them being in it. They needed to be in it. If they weren't in it, they wouldn't get any funding. So it's good that we were all on the same page. Secondly, there is, there is no funding this year for rehabilitation for any housing authorities because Governor Murphy used all the money. There was $160 million in the trust fund. And use it all, there's $5 million in it now. What gives me promise is that both governor candidates have both said that they would fund the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. It's really funny where our priorities are because, you know, our state, our governor talks about low-income housing and developments and people, you know, we need to, there's not enough housing. Then you use all the money in the trust fund. We, I mean... That's it, I'm done.
Okay. Councilwoman Toth?
Oh, means Councilmember Boyer doesn't get the last word. I'm shocked. But I do have two things this evening. And first, the city recently conducted a successful sale of bond anticipation notes. These are timed to mature next summer. They'll be rolled into a single long-term bond issuance along with the funding we approved this evening and some other outstanding anticipation notes. And I want to commend CFO, City Administrator Baldwin, and Director of Finance Kobeliska for their work here. This note issuance has an effective interest rate of 3.056%, which is lower than Treasury bills. And bond counsel informs us that similar notes issued by other municipalities have had rates as much as seven tenths of a percentage point higher. So well done there. And second, as the president noted, we had one of our frequent 100-year storms two weeks ago. I want to commend our whole DPW staff for their hard work managing the effects of that. And it so happened that Mayor Fagan, Councilmember Boyer, and I were on a previously scheduled call with Director Schreger during the storm. He was driving around the city as he was talking to us, reporting in real time. Also during the storm, we had two water main breaks and a fire. So kudo to all of our first responders for managing that. Our stormwater management system is designed to handle 25-year storms, and upgrading it to handle the rainfall we currently receive is both expensive and necessary. The city should begin taking steps for that. And in the meantime, residents can help. Last month, Director Schreger introduced the DPW's Adopt a Drain Program. It's easy, and keeping storm drains clear helps in all this heavy rain. I adopted the drain right outside my house, and I challenged my fellow council members to do the same and set an example for all the Summit residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the council? Councilman Smallwood?
Yes, since Mr. G. Kobe has already won the over-under bet for timing of the meeting, I guess I could go ahead and comment.
Yeah, you can absolutely. Because 9:30 came away about two hours ago.
I'll be really quick. This was, I was actually gonna mention this about the consent agenda, but we were just kind of rushing through this. If you notice, on the consent agenda, there was a rejection of the maybe playground bid. And I believe this developed today. CFO Baldwin about maybe playground? It looks like we do have a state contractor that we can work with that would work within our budget. The reason why we rejected the bids for maybe playgrounds is because they came in well over what our budget was, and we had a shortfall. So we rejected those bids. We do now believe the state contractor is gonna be able to work with us within that budget. And I spoke with Department of Community Programs today, and we're hoping to start October, November, at the very latest, on the long overdue maybe playground. So, that's all I had.
Great, thank you. Other comments, Councilwoman Councilson?
Thank you, Council President. One of the issues, I just want to say briefly, like the onus should really, for making sure that events run smoothly and that, you know, traffic is, the traffic concerns are addressed. The onus should be on the teams, the athletic department, on making sure that those events are running seamlessly before we move forward with lights. And one of the concerns is that now, the Tatlock neighborhood, it's, the responsibility is on them to just get through it rather than doing it right. And, you know, we've talked about a lot, about a lot, about a lot of things that are gonna be helpful for the neighborhood, but, you know, these things take time. So I want to make sure that those are properly addressed. I had a question for Councilman Smallwood. So with the maybe playgrounds, do you know if that, if the state contractor is going to get the, are we getting the playground as presented? Or do we need to remove equipment off of it? Do we not, do we have the funds to support it as presented? Or will we need to remove pieces of equipment from it?
That, I'm not sure, because this all developed today. So by next council meeting, I will have a much more detailed update.
Thank you.
But it's, from my understanding, it's gonna be something within the parameters that we already have. I don't know if, you know, there's a piece or a piece of equipment that would be taken in, you know, taken out or added back in. But from my understanding from the Department of Community Programs, we will be, they'll, as the original plan, we should be able to work within that. But again, I just found out probably an hour before the meeting, so I'll have more detailed information on that next meeting.
Thank you, other comments? Just real quick, Councilman Polowski, thanks for that very detailed update on Tatlock. And I know everyone's kind of gone home, but I do want to thank people who came out both for and against the project to speak. And I've said this multiple occasions. I do understand that, you know, those people, they live around a key asset for our community in town. And there have been a lot of issues that have resulted from that that I'm very happy to see the Tatlock Committee begin to address that. I would say maybe a suggestion is to work with Jenny to kind of publicize that a little bit so people understand all the progress that you guys have made in three or four months. And I know we have other things that obviously need to get done, but that would, you know, making sure that the neighborhood understands the progress, I think would go, hopefully, a long way to at least calming them down, at least that their concerns are being listened to. And, yeah, so that's all I wanted to say. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Everyone have a fantastic rest of your summer. We'll see you in the fall. We are adjourned.